I am going to call this council meeting to order. It is Wednesday, January 15th at 6:01. Kealan, could you call the roll, please?
Avalos.
Here.
Dunphy.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Mal. Ryan.
Here.
Wayana Lane.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Novick.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Brain.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
Portle Guinea.
Here.
Thank you. We, for this meeting, operating under our current rules, need to approve the agenda. Before we approve the agenda...
President, Portle Guinea, I'm so sorry to interrupt. May we ask the city attorney to read the rules of decorum?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, President. Welcome to Portland City Council. To testify before council in person or virtually, you must sign up in advance on the council agenda at wwwportland.gov/council/agenda. Information on engaging with council can be found on the council clerk's webpage. Individuals may testify for three minutes unless the presiding officer states otherwise. Your microphone will be muted when your time is over. The presiding officer preserves order. Disruptive conduct such as shouting, refusing to conclude your testimony when your time is up, or interrupting others' testimony or council deliberations will not be allowed. If you cause a disruption, a warning will be given. Further disruption will result in ejection from the meeting. Anyone who fails to leave once ejected is subject to arrest for trespass. Additionally, council may take a short recess and reconvene virtually. Your testimony tonight should address the matter being considered. When testifying, first, state your name for the record; your address is not necessary. Two, if you are a lobbyist, identify the organization you represent. And third, virtual testifiers should unmute themselves when the council clerk calls their name. Thank you.
Thank you. So our first item of business tonight, and Kealan, do we need you to read the, these first couple of items that are administrative or, okay, great. Our first item of business is approval of the agenda. Before we approve the agenda, I would accept a motion to amend the agenda to refer item, let's get the right number, I apologize, to refer item 10 back to the mayor's office. This is a reappointment request, and because we have not had time to create a process for consideration of appointments, the mayor has graciously agreed to take that item back and bring it to us a little closer to when that reappointment is actually up.
Second.
Still moved. All right, wait, already took the motion?
I believe we had a motion.
Oh, I move to refer that back to me.
Kealan, could you call the roll for us?
Um, would you, is that, yeah, okay, sorry. Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Canal.
Aye.
Wayana Lane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Brain.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Portle Guinea.
Aye.
Great, that passes. And are there any other requests to reorder items or reschedule any items on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, that approves with unanimous consent. We also, under our current rules, need to accept the president's recommendation of the items on the agenda. This is where, once committees are established, we would have the opportunity, under these current rules, to refer things to committee or to the council as the whole. Because we don't have committees established yet, I am recommending that we for every, refer everything to the council as a whole to consider tonight. Are there any requests to amend the president's recommendations as listed on the agenda? Okay, hearing none, the president's recommendations passed by unanimous consent. We are now moving on to the regular agenda, beginning with public comment. Kealan, would you like to invite up our commenters?
Yes, thank you. First up, we have Yume Delegato.
Good evening, councilors, President Portle Guinea, Mayor Wilson. For the record, my name is Yume Delegato, and I am here in my personal capacity as the Chair of the Citizen Review Committee, or CRC, which I've served on for the past four years. I am also a former member of the Police Accountability Commission, which proposed our city's new system of police oversight. Last week, the Citizen Review Committee wrote to this council outlining our concerns about the transition process and asking for a voice in that process. I am here to reiterate this request and to emphasize the precarious nature of our current system. Recognizing that it is rare for a sitting chair to appear before this body, I will hope you, I hope you will understand the importance of my presence here. For many years, much of the burden of compliance with USV, City of Portland, has rested squarely on the shoulders of volunteers. Key amongst those duties is a review of officer-involved shootings, a term which I think belies the full weight of that task. So let me be less oblique. This city routinely asks us, volunteers, to watch police and community members interact in some of the most harrowing situations possible. They ask us to watch people die in some of those encounters, frame by agonizing frame, and then to rewind and to watch again, and again, and again. We are asked to make sense of these moments, knowing that we do so as part of a system that Portlanders voted to overturn in 2020. We are asked to carry that moral dissonance, case after case. For four years, we have done this work with less than half of the volunteers proposed for the new system, a fraction of the budget, and none of the supports that were proposed for that new system. We have done this work to the best of our ability, but we cannot do so indefinitely. It is perhaps worse for the dedicated employees of the independent police review. We have asked them to place their careers in limbo indefinitely. The task of seeding our replacements has fallen to this council, so I am here to ask you, please set a clear timeline for concluding this process. The CRC stands ready to assist you in any way we can and to the best of our ability. You will likely hear from community members tonight who have concerns about bias and other provisions of the new system. I share some of those concerns, and I hope this council can address them in the way that it sees fit. But I also know that we owe it to the public, to our volunteers, and to the officers that serve in the police bureau, to provide clarity about what comes next and to finish the task we started. I hope that you can strike that balance. Thank you.
Counselor Canal, you wanted to make a brief remark?
Yeah, thank you, Yume, for coming to speak with us today, and thank you for sharing your story and the impact it's had on you and your colleagues to watch something that traumatic and then have to watch it again and again. I think everyone on this council is committed to ensuring that we have a Portland where there are no traumatic deaths at all. And also, thank you for your service on the PAC and CRC. I've gotten a chance to work with you there. It has been unusual for committee leadership to speak to council, but it shouldn't be. You all deserve a voice in this process; you've earned it. We must move rapidly to set up the new accountability system and move rapidly in the right direction. And I know I'll be discussing it further with colleagues to ensure we're not creating unnecessary delay and that this council ultimately determines that direction. I share some of your concerns with both the timing and the provisions you mentioned, and I'm not willing to sacrifice getting it done right to get it done fast because we can do both, get it done right and get it done fast. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor.
Thank you, Yume.
Next up, we have Wayne Wigness, joining us online.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, well, three minutes is enough to say everything I wanted to say. I tried emailing you representatives only to find that the email addresses of public representatives are now being withheld from the public. Not a great first impression for this new government. Makes me feel it's more bureaucratic, less of a representative democracy. But for those who are interested, my full testimony I posted on my website, I don't know, I think you can see that. Anyway, my main concern is that, Keith, you aren't saying much in the way of quality standards or tenant rights in regards to building shelters. Instead, you seem to be operating on the principle that if we build it, they will come, dot, 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 and they will do what they're told. Now, I hope we're not allowing the grants passed decision to go to our heads. There may be a big difference between a small-town case like that and cases that will evolve if cities like Portland choose to really push the envelope here. Personally, I think there's a reason why the Supreme Court has refused to review that case yet and other cases like it for a very long time. It's because this issue goes straight to the heart of private property rights. And let's face it, rights to private property are a thing that doesn't really make sense when you scrutinize it. Take land ownership, for example. Land is known as a fictitious commodity in the Sunside. Nobody built land itself, so you can't really justify earning it. I like what the Russian peasants, emancipated Russian serfs used to say, "It's God's land; it belongs to those who use it." But honestly, thank you, Keith, because what you're not telling us is housing first. We know what works, housing first. Personally, I think homelessness is a family issue much more than a private housing issue, and our focus, it needs to be on legitimizing alternative forms of the family more than shoving people into small and overpriced boxes, which actually take them away from their street family. Somewhat related to that, what about outdoor shelters? And I'm not talking about pods like you, Dan Ryan. You've unethically reduced our notion of a, our collective notion of an outdoor shelter down to, talking about just places where people can go to sleep, find safety in numbers more than tents, and God forbid, a sense of community and pride. I think things like that are what used to make Portland cool, way back before Charlie Hill's street sweeps. As for the study of shelter systems, our quality standards are so poor, it's unethical. PSU grad students, they make a few phone calls to shelter operators, and they make a whole paper off of that. It helps get them a thesis; it doesn't really give us a clue. I'll close saying, too much change, too fast, is dangerous. And I explain why I think that this is, that is particularly true in this case in my full communication. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wigness, for sharing those thoughts with us. We appreciate hearing from you.
Next up, we have Dan Handelman, Portland Cop Watch.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Hello, members of city council and city officials. My name is Dan Handelman. I use he/him pronouns, and I'm a member of Portland Cop Watch. My colleague Mark Porus is, will continue our formal introduction. Portland Cop Watch is a grassroots volunteer organization promoting police accountability through community member action. Our philosophy is that so long as there are police, we need to hold them accountable. We're working toward a police bureau free of brutality, corruption, and racism. We're a project of Peace and Justice Works, which promotes nonviolent conflict resolution on local, national, and international levels. We have met every chief of police, nearly every city council member, and other officials, including auditors, since we began in 1992. Our newsletter is published three times a year. You should have received a print copy of the January 2025 issue, number 94. It's also available on our website at portlandcopwatch.org. We run an incident report line at 503-321-5120, which takes reports of incidents involving the PBB and Multnomah County Sheriff's deputies. In line with our goals, we respond to people with information about how to resolve their cases to help prevent future occurrences. We conduct trainings on your rights in the police in association with volunteer lawyers and how to cop watch. Cop watching is a generic term for observing police behavior created by Berkeley Cop Watch in 1990. It's an international movement, not a franchise, so many other groups use the name Cop Watch. Much of our work surrounds our goal of promoting and monitoring an effective system for civilian oversight of police. I've been to nearly every meeting of the Civilian Oversight Community Board since 1992. First, the Portland Internal Affairs Auditing Committee, which was created in 1982, 10 years before we were formed, then the Citizen Review Committee, which succeeded then when the Independent Police Review was created in 2001. We sat on the mayor's work group that proposed the system, which eventually became IPR, albeit with parts missing. I was also on the Police Accountability Commission, which spent 20 months designing the new oversight system, outlining the 2020 ballot measure, 26217. Some key police accountability issues you'll be facing in the coming months are, first, you have until February 6th to appoint the nominated committee, which will turn, in turn nominate 21 members of the new community board for police accountability. Each district has to agree on one person for the 10-person committee, which will include designated from the chief's office and the police association and the police commanding officers association. Two, this month, the Portland police are required by city policy to present a report on the substance and frequency of their work with the FBI's Joint Carers and Task Force. Given what a flashpoint this issue has been since the year 2000, we urge that the JTF report be heard by the whole council, not in committee. Number three, again, as you establish rules for council meetings, we urge you to place lawsuit settlements about police misconduct on the full council's regular agenda, even when they are less than the $50,000 limit, they may be settled by the city administrator without... Issue of police misconduct comes and goes from public attention. We started shortly after the LA police beat Rodney King in 1991 and the subsequent uprising. The PBB shot and killed 12-year-old Nathan Thomas in early 1992, and the PBB has used heavy-handed tactics to repress protest actions when those actions become popular and widespread. After the death of George Floyd in 2020, the city seemed to embrace the concept of not the movement of Black Lives Matter. It's problematic that the police violence against that movement doesn't stick in people's minds, the way that focusing on property damage done during the protests perpetuates the narrative.
I'm sorry, Mr. Handelman, the time was up there, but we appreciate your comments. Thank you for speaking to us today, and I know that you've reached out to a number of council members as well.
Next up, we have Mark Porus, Portland Cop Watch.
Hello, council, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Mark.
Fantastic. Hi, my name is Mark Porus, I use he/him pronouns, and I'm a member of Portland Cop Watch. I learned about Portland Cop Watch when they were working on a community campaign around collective bargaining with the Portland Police Association in 2019 and 2020. I've learned that with one exception, there have been at least some public meetings for those important negotiations with PPA since at least 2010. We've been clear that Cop Watch supports the rights of workers to organize for fair wages and benefits. Our concern comes when PPA reaches too far into dictating policies that lead to unchecked violence against the community. The current PPA contract was set to expire in June of this year, so we asked the city attorney about the timeline for negotiations. They revealed that an April 2024 memo extended the contract until June of 2026. The extension gives this council more time to engage the community and ensure public meetings will happen. However, it is troubling that problematic parts of the contract will remain in place for another full year. The city's been under scrutiny of the US Department of Justice since they conducted an investigation and entered into a settlement agreement with the city in 2012. That agreement is meant to reduce the amount of force used when police encounter people in mental health crises. Data provided by consultants who review deadly force cases indicate that the use of deadly force in such cases has actually increased since the DOJ agreement went into effect. And last week, the city's status report to the court did not even mention mental health. Cop Watch has been testifying about the agreement from the beginning. Mr. Handelman also has participated with the Enhanced Amicus, or Friend of the Court, the Albina Ministerial Alliance Coalition for Justice and Police Reform since 2003, and as a steering committee member since 2010. The AMA Coalition has asked DOJ to, had asked the DOJ to investigate patterns of the Portland police after the death of Aaron Campbell in 2010. Sharing bureau data that showed disproportionate policing against Portland's relatively small black community did not persuade the feds to investigate the obvious racial disparities. Roughly 25% of deadly force cases, 25% to 30% of all force, and 20% of traffic stops are of black people in Portland, which has a 6% black population. One of the city's core values is anti-racism. A serious look into where these disparities come from is long overdue to fulfill that promise. Regarding settlements, Portland Cop Watch has tracked over $3 million in payouts just for the 2020 protests. We also track other misconduct settlements, judgments, and jury awards, and keep a running top 25 listed on our website. Another core city value is transparency. Putting lawsuits on the regular agenda is important, both so the public knows about them and so council can discuss underlying policy issues and legislate improvements. Previous council often puts smaller settlements on the consent agenda, which only leads us to pulling those items for public discussion. The city's values around fiscal responsibility require you to keep in mind the most vulnerable populations. This means more compassionate policies towards the house's community, starting with not criminalizing those who have nowhere to sleep but outside, including people with good reasons not to trust city shelter systems. We look forward to engaging with all of you collectively and each of you individually. It's important to keep in mind that public safety means much more than using police to address every issue on Portlanders' minds. It takes alternatives to police, creative nonviolence programs, and properly holding officers accountable to achieve public safety. Thank you.
Thank you for being here with us today, Mr. Porus. We appreciate your remarks.
Next up, we have Michelle Mila.
Hello, good evening, council and mayor. My name is Michelle Mila. I am a resident in the northwest Stadiumhood neighborhood, and today I bring two related and pressing issues that threaten the safety and livability of my community. The harmful operations of the Portland People's Outreach Project, or PPOP, and the importance of safeguarding our essential services budgets. PPOP is the volunteer group that distributes syringes and crack pipes in our school zone each Friday night. They are not a one-for-one needle exchange. On a daily basis, we pick up syringes that are used and discarded foil laced with drug residue all around, all in our school zone. Today, it happened to be the needles we picked up were on the ground near Cathedral School. We have been documenting criminal activities spilling over into the community that radiate from the hub of PPOP activities, and these problems are also impacting the lives of the unsheltered people who have to navigate the biohazards on the ground, and they're also feeling a decreased sense of safety. Stadiumhood has security footage, photos, and eyewitness accounts, interviews that confirm that PPOP's operations have drawn organized groups, including Antifa-affiliated individuals, into our safe route to school. The proposed cuts that are coming up that you're going to consider to our safety budgets will further strain an already overburdened neighborhood, so today I offer four considerations to help alleviate some of these burdens. Number one, the immediate enforcement of permit and zoning city codes, and a commitment to relocate PPOP out of a school zone where they can work without compromising community safety. Number two, collaboration with the county for harm reduction programs. Let's ensure they address the needs of the entire community. Number three, I invite each of our new 12 counselors out to tour our neighborhood, a personal tour, and witness the things that we have been bringing to your attention at these council meetings. When it comes to demographics, the east Portland people and stadium neighborhoods are actually more alike than they are different, and that's according to the Northwest and Mosen research. And we want to partner with you and help address the commonalities that we have in these problems. We appreciate that Counselor Clark is going to be joining our Stadiumhood call this Saturday so we can talk about some of these things. Number four, please protect our safety budgets. This is critical. Our police, fire, and emergency communications cover critical services, and they are the backbone of our public safety programs. We're not asking for perfection; we're just asking for some collaboration. Right now, we're on the ground, working really hard. We're forging new relationships with our community members and stakeholders each and every day, and we want to share what we've accomplished with you. The bottom line is that our parents are afraid to let their children walk to school around here, and residents are leaving the city. Cutting safety budgets might very well push us over a tipping point of no return. Resources must be prioritized to ensure the safety and well-being of the community and not towards padding bureaucracy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your service.
Thank you, Ms. Mila. We appreciate you being here and sharing some information about what's happening in your community.
That completes communications.
Okay, the next portion of our agenda, the next three items we have are all budget items, two grants and one budget adjustment. Counselors, you should have received a memo from our DCAs about items four and five. Clerk, could you read our next agenda item, please?
Appropriate grants totaling $7 million from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the development of Barber Apartments Affordable Housing Project.
And I believe we have Halmi Hisarach from the Housing Bureau presenting this for Thank you both for being here today. Go ahead and introduce yourself and can launch it.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, City Council. Donnie Olivera for the record. I'm the Deputy City Administrator for Community and Economic Development. So on behalf of the City of Portland's Housing Bureau, Congresswoman Susan Bonamici, with the support of Senators Jeff Merkley and Ron Wyden, we submitted a federal appropriations request for $2 million towards the construction of Barber Apartments. The request was approved in the Consolidated Appropriations Act in March of 2024. This economic development initiative, community project funding, was, is administered by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Tonight before you, along with this $2 million, the request also includes allocating the remaining $5 million in community development block grant funds from previous years to complete a land acquisition for the development of Barber Apartments. Upon completion, the project will add 149 new units of permanently affordable rental housing target, housing targeting low-income families. The project helps to meet the demand for affordable family-sized units, with 68% of the units having two, three, or four bedrooms. I want to acknowledge that this is a really important moment as we keep the housing production pipeline going in our city. All across the city, all types of housing is needed, and this is a great example of federal leadership working with the city to help us find the resources to complete this investment. I'm now going to turn over to my colleague, Director Halmi Hisarach, to talk about the project's... project specifically and some details.
Good evening, Helmi Hissarik, Director of Portland Housing Bureau. I use she/her pronouns. And before you today is an increase in the fiscal year '24-'25 budget by $7 million from federal grants administered by HUD. The purpose of the ordinance, as I mentioned, is to incre-- oh, let me go to the-- I have a short presentation on the project, really for your information, and I'll go through it. We also are joined by Joni Hartman, who's the director of real estate at Innovative Housing, who's the developer, if you have any more detailed or technical questions on the project. So let's go to the next slide, please. We request council to accept and appropriate $2 million of HUD community project funding awarded by Congress, and we thank Senators Ron Wyden and Jeff Merkley, along with Representative Suzanne Bonamici, for their advocacy to secure this funding. I'd also like to acknowledge the Office of Governmental Relations, who was a great assist in this project, in the funding. We appropriate $5 million of HUD community development block grant funding from the city's prior year balance. These resources will support the development of the Barber Apartments, which are located in Council District Four. It's a new multifamily affordable rental project in southwest Portland. Next slide. The Barber Apartments is 100% affordable project, providing 149 affordable housing units, plus one manager's unit, in the Capitol Hill neighborhood of southwest Portland, targeting immigrant and refugee families. The project will be developed and owned by Innovative Housing, Inc. Barber Apartments was created to prevent future displacement of the diverse communities of color along the southwest Portland corridor due to planned infrastructure investments and development, including the extension of light rail. This is also the second PHB-supported project to receive a congressionally designated funding via the Economic Development Initiative Community Project Funds administered by HUD. To ensure long-term affordability, the borrower will enter into regulatory agreement with Portland Housing Bureau to maintain the affordability of the project for 99 years. Next slide. The Barber Apartments, as I mentioned, consists of 149 affordable units. These are at or below 60% of the area median income, plus a manager's unit. The majority of the units, 68% of them, are sized for families with 82 two-bedroom units, 16 three-bedroom units, and four four-bedroom units. 21% of the units, or 32 of the units, will be affordable to households with incomes under 30% of the area median income. 13% of the units, or 19 of them, will be affordable for households with incomes up to 45% of the area median. 38 project-based vouchers from Home Forward, the housing authority, make these deeply affordable units possible. Next slide. Site amenities in the project include a large central outdoor play area, laundry facilities, bike and vehicle parking, resident services, management offices, and two large community rooms. All three- and four-bedroom units will have in-unit washer and dryer. The project is pursuing an Earth Advantage Gold certification. Additionally, the project is applying for PSF, Portland Clean Energy Funds, to pursue additional sustainable greenhouse gas-reducing options in the building's construction. The project team will strive to meet the PHB, or Portland Housing Bureau, and Metro, it's a Metro bond-funded project, equity and contracting goals, including 30% hard cost and 20% professional services participation by COVID-certified firms. The development team will also make a good faith effort to meet and exceed the 14% hard cost participation subgoals of the DMWBE, or Disadvantaged Minority Women in Emerging Small Business Firms. Due to federal financing included in the project, Section 3 hiring and the Build America/Buy America Act requirements apply. The project team must prioritize efforts to hire and train Section 3 workers with a goal of at least 25% of all labor hours worked. Buy America preference under BABA applies to all iron and steel products used in the construction of the project. Construction is projected to start in March 2025 and be completed in the first quarter of 2027. Next slide. A little bit about resident services. The Innovative Housing, Inc. will provide resident services in the Barber in partnership with the Immigrant and Refugee Community Organization, IRCO. IRCO will provide culturally-specific programming to residents of the community rooms and meeting spaces, and have priority referral for housing opportunities. IHI also plans, that's Innovative Housing, Inc., also plans to work closely with nearby community centers, mosques, and organizations, including Community Services Network, Neighborhood House, Islamic Social Services of Oregon, Somali-American Council of Oregon, and Black Parent Initiative, to provide an array of culturally-specific and culturally-responsible support services for residents. Next slide. The federal grants that are before you today will leverage over $70 million, or 10 times of other public and private financing for the project, contributed by Metro, the Oregon Housing Community Services Department, the Energy Trust of Oregon, Portland Clean Energy Fund, and the Limited Equity Investor Raymond James. Last slide. So appropriate federal grants, so what's before you is to appropriate federal grants totaling $7 million from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for the development of the Barber Apartments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we have two questions from councilors. Councilor Smith?
Thank you, Madam President. I noted that you said that the three- and four-bedrooms would have their own washer and dryer. Do you have onsite laundry for the other residents?
I will have to ask the developer.
Over here behind you. Thank you. And the answer to that is yes, there are multiple laundry rooms on the various floors in the multifamily.
Thank you.
And can we have you introduce yourself, Porras? I'm sorry.
I'm Joni Hartman. I'm the Director of Housing at Innovative Housing, Inc.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joni. Counselor Dunphy?
Thank you, President Peralgini. I noticed that on there you'd mentioned there's a 99-year affordability. Three questions about that. One, why 99 instead of 100? Two, when does that begin? Does that begin when construction begins, or does that begin when the first tenant is given a lease, or is it when the last tenant is fully, you know, when they're fully booked? How does that 99-year timeline start?
There was two questions. Yeah.
Right, and the third was, what happens after 99 years?
Those are all really good questions. The first question, I can answer the question regarding why 99 years. 99 years is by legal definition of the longest term that we can have for essentially an imperperity lease in the United States. When it starts is a question I'm not sure I can answer. Do you happen to know if it starts upon--
Generally, the regulatory agreements are signed at closing, and they're dated as a closing.
Okay, so it would be as the date of the closing of finance, which precedes any occupant getting in. At the end of 99 years, what typically happens is the useful life of a real estate asset is 30 years. At that time, the developer has the opportunity to consider refinancing. Often, during a refinancing, we will look to extend out the term of the affordability beyond the 99 years for an additional period of, say, 30 or 40 years. And we keep doing that every time we refi.
And just to follow up, does the financing hap-- does the final transfer of financing complete prior to the first shovel on the ground, or is that a process that it can occur simultaneous?
It's a two-step process. The first step is construction financing closes. Once the construction is completed, it'll convert, using the tax credits, into a permanent financing. So there's a two-step process in the financing closings.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Green?
I appreciate the presentation and the proposal. So this is just mostly federal money, and this is essentially authorizing us to make use of that federal money. Is that correct?
The appropriation before you today is 100% federal dollars from the HUD, Housing and Urban Development.
Thank you. And I just want to put a comment that the southwest corridor, this specific area, is my neighborhood, and it is currently underserved by affordable housing. So I support generally attempts to go after federal money and move quickly on affordable housing production in a high-opportunity transit corridor. Thanks.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you to our congressional delegation and our government affairs folks upstairs. I also live not far from this district, and this summer, when I was at the multicultural fair in one of the parks, I heard a lot about the need for housing along the corridor. I actually worked on the southwest corridor light rail project, or one-time light rail project. So I'm really happy to hear about this, and I hate, and I'm thinking that we also need a greater effort to preserve the affordable housing that is in the Barber corridor as well. I heard a lot about that at the multicultural fair. Thank you.
And Counselor Canall?
Thank you. I have a series of process questions around the emergency ordinance aspect of this. My understanding is that under our new form of government, accepting a grant no longer requires a council vote, and the only thing that I've seen in the emergency clause is that there would be a concern around delay of accepting the funds. And if that's correct, my question is, why is this proposed as an emergency ordinance specifically?
Thank you for the question, Counselor. So in this particular moment, we're looking to activate all federal dollars as quickly as possible. That's one step. And because we're appropriating new dollars that this council or prior council hadn't contemplated, we need your action to get, to give us the green light to complete the capital stack. So this is almost a keeping up with the development, you know, timeline that's already been in process for many years.
2019 is when we took out the purchase offer on the land.
There you go.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks. This is a great area for this, so I appreciate that. And maybe you said it, and I missed it, I was looking. One of these areas is a fairly, I'll say, old-school but important business in the area. Do you know if they have any, are they closing down, or do they have transition plans? I'm talking about the rental group there that provides a lot of, I'll just say, the things that we all need, but we can't afford to own ourselves, right? Do you have any idea about the future of them and how they've been involved in this thus far?
Well, we have been working with Barber Rentals for, since 2019. My understanding is that they are wrapping up their business after the end of the holiday season. And between now and, we're supposed to take control of the site on the 26th of February, they will be disposing of all of the very interesting articles and useful things that they have onsite.
Used them many times. Turns out, it's great to have somebody in town who owns all the things that you need for a good party, right? But they're fully involved in this, and they've been supportive and to that.
Absolutely.
Would you describe it that way?
They've been very good partners.
Great. Thanks for touching on that point.
I believe we have one person signed up for public testimony. Is that the case? Okay.
We have one person signed up.
We don't have any more questions from council then. I will thank our guests and move on to public testimony, please.
Bridge Green Simka Johnson.
Good evening, councilors. The way the procedure works is you don't reserve seats for testifiers, so it will allow you to come downstairs. I'll be with you shortly.
Procedure. Because I always forget to strum every time. Okay.
Hello, old friends and new. I am Bridge Green Simka Charles Johnson, and apropos on Commissioner Canall's mention of the word "emergency," long ago, when the Honorable Mrs. Smith was on the county commission, mayor sitting here, passed a housing emergency. This is still the best we can do. Go to the electronic agenda and scroll through how long this is. Observe that nowhere in this presentation, which I cannot find linked on the public agenda listing, so I could not preview these slides and discuss and prepare for this, but I knew, I knew that it's just a glory show, that there's no concern about the timing of lifesaving deliverables. People are dying on our streets, and we're investing this much time on 140 units that are going to prioritize people who came here after many of these people got on their first waiting list. Now, I'm very in favor of us pushing very hard to wrestle from the federal government money to give adequate and proper living conditions to all refugees and asylum seekers. We can't throw them in a pot with neighbors that have been on housing waiting lists for over 12 years. And regardless of whether I'm right or wrong about how we're doing that, you need to, I believe, in your fiduciary duties, look at the fact that we've just said that this project is probably going to take two years. I'm not an expert in commercial real estate. The Housing Bureau is, and the things that they don't talk about are the things that need to be talked about. What is the per-square-foot cost of these units, and how does it compare to what we're giving normal, ordinary, working families that can't get into any assistance program? The reason that's ultra-critical is because y'all, in partnership with the Joint Office of Homeless Services, create castes, a caste system and striation among poor and homeless people. So some homeless people sleep in a situation where our taxpayers spend $2,100-plus per month just on housing, and then throw the cost of wraparound services on top of that, and then another caste, discriminated class of homeless people get told, "No, you can't have that. You have to go to congregate shelter, and we're never going to talk about how much that costs per person either." That is why hordes of people like myself are spending years sleeping on the streets around you, is because you don't address the problem in a systemic scope. I realize that this is just one agenda item that's an emergency, so we can get the federal grant.
...actualize every publicly funded housing program as a piece in the puzzle with specific numbers that line up with the point in time count, and we also--
Sir, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to cut you off, but we have--
Thank you, thank you, Madam President. So obviously, this is a yes vote, but contextualized and built into the system for real solutions. Thank you.
Thank you for drawing our attention to the bigger picture that we need to make sure we're paying attention to. Is there any other final discussion before we take a vote? Okay, and this is an emergency ordinance, so it does need nine affirmative votes to pass. Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
I just want to appreciate the efforts to seek PSF dollars and make the building climate resilient, and also to work with community partners to ensure we're not displacing the very people this project is meant to help. I vote aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Aye.
Canall?
So I asked the question about emergency ordinances because I have concerns about the overuse of those in previous councils. I do think that in this particular case, with an incoming change to federal oversight of some of these dollars and how those will be done, that makes sense to go through this process. I want to appreciate Senators Merkley and Wyden, Congresswoman Bonamici. I also just wanted to shout out, this is near a grocery store. There's cultural programming with IRCO, which is great, and it's a Portland-based developer, which is always nice to see as well, and those are really great attributes of this particular program. Probably speaking of affordable-- Probably speaking, affordable housing is good. One of the renters on this council, I'm excited to support something that helps renters be able to stay in their homes. I'll just note that I do support the idea that if we're going to get a presentation, it should be posted in advance in the future, so that everybody in the public can see it too. And, but yeah, on the whole, this seems like a good project, and I vote yes.
Ryan.
Yes. This checks all the necessary boxes of success: federal, state, local governments coming together, COVID goals have been met, and thrilled with the workforce development targets, namely, the 20% or more hours worked by trades and job-site hours will be done by state-registered apprentices. And I got to also add that it's great to see three- and four-bedroom units, and I can't believe I finally heard about the 45% AMI target. So that's wonderful, because there's such a big gap between 30 and 60. You've heard me say this many times, a few of you. Anyway, bravo. I vote aye.
Keanu Lane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
I just want to acknowledge that this is going to benefit the immigrant refugee committee community, which has longstanding presence in West Portland Park and along this corridor. And I object to sort of this idea of distinguishing normal, working-class people from immigrants. They are also normal, working-class people as well, displaced in no small part by our federal government's actions, so I vote aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Portel Guinea.
Aye. We will move on to our next agenda item.
Appropriate grant for $125,000 from Oregon Health Authority for the 2024 State Healthy Home Grant.
Thank you. And we have our same guests back up. And is John Trin joining you as well? If you can all introduce yourselves as you begin speaking, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President. Don Yeliver for the record, Deputy City Administrator for Community Economic Development. I'm going to keep this brief, because you have a long night ahead of you. Counselor, this is a great opportunity for this council to see a service here at work together. So the state of Oregon has provided these Healthy Homes grants for many years, and this is an opportunity for the Housing Bureau, the Permitting Development Bureau, Prosper, and BPS to work together to deliver services to our communities through a grant program providing funding from the state. I'm going to immediately turn it over to my colleagues to walk through the specifics, so we can move on with the city's agenda.
Great. Once again, Helmy Hiserek, Director, Portland Housing Bureau. I use she/her pronouns. I'm joined today by John Trin, who manages our Neighborhood Preservation Program. And I'm going to actually let him do most of the presentation. I just wanted to mention that this is a state grant from the Oregon Health Authority. It is leveraged by federal dollars that we run, called the Healthy Homes Program. And I'll let John explain what the purpose of the program is, and who we serve, and how many people we anticipate serving with the state grant.
Good evening. John Trin, Neighborhood Housing Preservation Manager for the Housing Bureau. It's exciting to be able to present to you and ask for an appropriation of $125,000 to be utilized this fiscal year. We apply for $750,000 with the Oregon Health Authority for the 2024 State Healthy Home Grant on April 5th. The State Healthy Home Grant will leverage our federal Healthy Home Grant that we received back in May 15, 2023. The program serves as a critical anti-displacement resource for low-to-moderate-income families citywide. The Oregon Health Authority has notified the city of Portland that it will award the grant for the 2024 State Healthy Home Grant to the Portland Housing Bureau and Portland Permitting and Development in the amount of $750,000. The grant hopes to serve 21 to 30 households within the three-year grant period. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, does anybody have any questions? Okay. Do we have anybody who's signed up for public testimony?
No one signed up.
Oh, there are now questions. Perfect. Thank you. Counselor Canal.
So this is a similar question to the preceding one. Other than the fact that housing broadly is an emergency, as was pointed out to us, why is this an emergency ordinance?
Yeah, I'll do. Thank you, Counselor, for the question. Don Yeliver for the record. In this particular case, it's because we're trying to expend the resources as soon as possible. Just given the transition, we may have taken this to council a bit earlier, but we had a little bit of delay with the new form of government taking shape, so we're a little bit behind the work planning. So that $125,000 that you're approving tonight would almost go immediately into action.
Is that, is that not always the case? That it would always be good to spend the money we receive in a grant as quickly as possible?
Absolutely. In this particular case, just given the situation of our government, if, if we were here four months ago, it probably would have been on regular agenda. But we're a little bit behind the, the project timeline.
Thank you, D.C. Yeliver.
Counselor Dunphy.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm doing a little bit of quick math, because I'm not good at that. This works out to be, you're saying about 20, what does it say? 25 to, or 21 to 30 people over a three-year period? Can you give me an example of who we're helping in this situation? Homeowners versus renters? What we're doing with that money? It works out to be about $25,000 per person, if that's the, the goal. What are we getting for that?
So this is going to be leveraging our federal Healthy Home Grant that we received back in 2023. We're hoping to assess homeowners who are 80% less AMI, area median income. We're looking at it in terms of working with Portland Permitting and Development under their program called Empower Neighborhood. And so they have homes, homeowners that they're working with that have code violation. And so we're working with them to, to resolve those code violations. Some of our grant programs that we have right now are smaller amount. And so using a bigger dollar amount, we're able to successfully take care of some of those violations. For example, fixing a roof, fixing a plumbing, broken pipes, and so forth.
Well, those, I mean, that sounds fantastic. And I know that there are especially a lot of older adults who are aging in place, who are having a hard time keeping up with repairs, low-income families who simply cannot afford to replace their roofs. I'm worried, though, will any of these dollars be used to resolve fines that have been leveraged by the permitting bureaus?
These dollars are particularly for bricks and, for construction, not fines.
Okay. But if I may, I'm a homeowner, I'm getting my new roof out of this. I assume that if I'm on the, the list for this program, that it's been a while, and bureaucrats have been involved and know me on a first-name basis. And probably there have been some fines or fees leveraged against that homeowner. Do we resolve those in some way with this program?
Yeah, I can, yeah. Counselor Don Yeliver for the record. I think in the case where you're describing, where someone may have a fine because of a noncompliance or an ordinance issue, if we were working with the Housing Bureau to rectify that, we have, you know, forgiveness programs. I would want to speak absolutely on that. Of course, it's going to be case by case. In some instances, there's code violations that span a range of issues. But I do think the Permitting Development Bureau is definitely a kinder Permitting Development Bureau, and we're trying to be more supportive of our communities.
Great. Thank you.
Any other discussion from council? Okay, again, this is a, an emergency ordinance and requires nine votes. Kealan, could you please call the roll?
Avalos.
Thank you again, and I am very grateful to see the partnership with the state on the Healthy Homes Bill. Obviously biased, because I was part of that coalition, and I think that work to create more clean energy opportunities is critical, and I appreciate your partnership. I vote aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Canal.
Yeah, thank you to you, to the Oregon Legislature for making the funding available, to the Oregon Health Authority. Because this doesn't change our bottom line as a city, and we're just taking the money we've already received in a grant and appropriating it, I think your argument makes sense on the emergency ordinance side, so I'm happy to vote yes. Thank you.
Ryan.
Aye.
Keanu Lane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Portel Guinea.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you to our guests. And Kealan, could you please read the next item for us?
Adopt a supplemental budget for city council and mayor staffing.
As we sit here tonight, we are about to enter into a discussion about a budget adjustment. And I want to remind everybody that our council was not set up for success. And in fact, the former mayor brought forward a proposal for our council's staffing that went against the recommendations of his own transition team and the public. We were not set up to serve Portlanders in the way that you all, the voters, asked for in charter reform. We are not trying to solve the entirety of the budget problem that we have inherited. And we've heard the response from Portlanders and the fear from our frontline workers that this budget adjustment adds to an already very, very difficult budget conversation that we'll be facing over the next few months. I want to be clear that every single one of my colleagues that I've talked to about this proposal is committed to engaging in that broader budget process in a way that ensures the outcomes that best serve Portlanders. We will prioritize protecting services that Portlanders rely on and right-size the administrative management, the PSF city leadership, that received the most additional funding under Mayor Wheeler's implementation of the charter. Tonight, though, we are focused on right-sizing our ability to do the work that Portlanders are expecting from us under charter reform. I am looking forward to a robust conversation about this measure. I will point out, as I say that, that this is the start of three hours and 40 minutes of agenda items that we have left on our agenda at 7 o'clock. So I hope that we can have that robust conversation and also make sure to be as efficient with our time as possible. As we move forward, are there any questions? We'll get to comments and debate, but are there any questions about where we're starting from, from counselors? Go ahead, Counselor Avalos.
Thank you, Madam President. So as the, my fellow counselors know, because I alerted them a few days ago, I was prepared to offer an amendment today that would reduce the overall ask to just one FTE per council office and change the funding source to contingency for a total of 1.2 million. Partially, I was introducing, planning to introduce this amendment due to my personal feelings and feelings that I've heard from other counselors and community members about the trade-offs in the way that the proposal was originally written. And it was unclear at the time why we would need a lot of one-time funds in order, and spend them within five months. So those were some of the original reasons why I was considering this amendment. But however, it's come to my attention that we are planning to have a larger discussion. There are many various proposals on the table, so I just wanted to inform the body that I'm not going to put the amendment forward at this moment, but I am prepared to offer that if that is what folks are desiring, again, bringing it down to one staffer per office. So I just wanted to put that at the forefront as well, so that the community can respond to that as we begin this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Avalos. Counselor Smith?
Madam President, I just want to say thank you for your courageous leadership at this time, early in, in the process, that you're willing to build an infrastructure to make sure that we're effective and that we can do the work of the people. I noted in your amendment that this would be coming from the city administrators' budget, but is this the time that we can add to, to take that from the contingency budget instead of the, the city administrators' budget?
We can absolutely consider an amendment to do that. I believe we have a fair amount of public testimony signed up. And I think, as folks have heard hinted at, we have a number of counselors who have ideas about amendments to this proposal. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, Counselor Smith, is hear from the public. If there's any other clarifying questions from counselors, then hear from the public, and then have a broader conversation about level of funding and space that we could get funding from.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Madam President, I think a few of us have hands up before we make that move.
Before we hear from the public?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. As we get into this discussion, I would encourage my colleagues not to think about this in terms of FTEs, although that's a proxy, that's a good yardstick for measurement of dollars. But really, this is about dollars that we can, that we have the authority, and really the obligation to manage that best fits our districts and our constituencies. So as we get into that, I would like to sort of offer that framing. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Green. Counselor Zimmerman?
I'm hoping that perhaps you can describe where this funding package sits currently. I think that we have been in an unfortunate few days where some bad misinformation was put out into the public sphere by an employee outside of their scope. And I think it's led to a lot of misunderstanding about what would be given up. And I have a feeling that a significant amount of testimony today will address that. And I think that if we can get in front of that, it will help alleviate some concerns that exist probably within this room and online, to shore up some time, because I'd like to do that. I'm certainly not happy with how some stuff came about, and I think that we're going to hear from that. So perhaps we spend a little bit more time before we just open it up.
Why don't we take comments from Counselor Dunphy? And I believe I see Counselor Smith back in the queue. And then Counselor Zimmerman, I would be happy to run through what we have today and what some of the conversation has been that both led to the proposal before us and perhaps some of what we've heard since then.
Thank you.
Counselor Dunphy, go right ahead.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to, before we begin this conversation, recognize that, you know, many of us in this body have had many years working in public service and recognize the specific demands that this job has. I spent five years working for late city commissioner Nick Fish as a team of seven. And the job was the hardest job I've ever had until now. Today, I am working as hard as I can with one staff member, and he's an amazing human being who's doing great work. But the work to adequately represent District 1 cannot be done by two people. It cannot be done from City Hall. And the work that is currently before us is simply not, is simply more than two people can ever handle, and it can, and we must meet the needs of what the, the voters actually put into place when we move towards a district representation. This current staffing arrangement does nothing to help deepen, or to, nothing but deepen the inequities that have happened east of I-205. And so I am bullish in making sure that we can act adequately, meet the needs of the community, and meet community where they are. And I'm looking forward to a more robust conversation with my colleagues.
Thank you, Counselor Dunphy. Counselor Smith?
Thank you. And I can just say ditto, ditto, ditto. We were at an East Portland Action Plan meeting the other night, and I had to get there a little late. And me and my staffer, my one staffer, went. But as we were leaving, Counselor Dunphy's staffer was still here in the office at 6:30. He could not come over to the meeting, but I had my staffer. So it's, it's a trade-off, and we're, we're trying to figure out how to do more with less. And I think what you were talking about, Counselor Zimmerman, that there was some talk about us taking money from the homeless Portland Solutions. That is not where we're planning to take this money from, and we, we're going to have this conversation later. But the original request was out of the city administrators' budget, and this new money is going to be taken from the contingency pot of money. So that's where we can shore this up at.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. So building off of Counselor Smith's remarks and in response to Counselor Zimmerman, what we have before us is a budget adjustment, which would increase the appropriations to council offices by $4,318,424 amongst the 12 of us, and increase funding to the mayor's office by $269,810, offsetting that by a decrease in operating expenses from the city administrators' budget. There has been conversation, not started by this council, that one of the places that that cut could come from in the city administrators' office is a specific program. And I do want to clarify that I don't believe anybody on this council directed the city administrator to that program. administrator to that program. In fact, we have been very specific that we trusted the city administrator to find the best cost savings available within his budget. We have since heard a number of suggestions on other places we could look for to pull those funds if we wanted to ensure that we avoided taking money from specific programs rather than leaving that choice up to the city administrator, one of which you heard councillor Smith refer to, which is the contingency. And part of the debate that I expect we'll be having is where those funds come from. There also has been some conversation about whether we are looking at a lump sum amount, and if so, what the general amount is that a councillor might need for their office budget to be spent in probably different ways in different offices, because we all have different needs and priorities, or whether we should be, talk about building up as to a specific amount of staff and specific line items, so that it's also part of the debate that I expect we'll hear today. As we invite up the public to comment, I do want to just put a bit of a finer point on that by saying, there is a lot of debate to be had. We'd like to hear from you first, to hear your concerns, but please know that there is much conversation still to be had before we hone in on a specific solution this evening. So councillor Smith, is that a legacy hand? Okay. Great. I believe we have a number of folks signed up for public testimony. Kealan, could you please call up our first testifiers? And if you are in the balcony and have signed up to testify, is this an okay time to have people start to make their way down?
It is.
Great. So please do that if you're here to testify on this agenda item.
First up, we have Fred Neal. Okay.
Welcome.
Good evening, Madam President and councillors. Mayor, my name is Fred Neal, and I am the co-chair of the Government Transition Advisory Committee, or the GTAC. I'm here with my co-chair, Jose Gamaro Georgensen. The GTAC serves as the primary advisory committee for the city's transition. The GTAC agrees that the current staffing levels for city council are inadequate and recommends sufficient staffing of both individual councillors and shared council operations to support effective legislative development and community engagement. The GTAC has not considered staffing for the mayor and is not commenting on that portion of today's proposed ordinance. Early last year, the GTAC sent a letter to the previous council arguing that the allocation of one staff per councillor, one shared administrative staff per council district, and five shared council operation staff was insufficient to staff an effective legislative body. We've submitted that letter as written testimony. Our recommendation for increased council staffing is based on research of 15 peer cities, as well as our collective personal and professional expertise and that of city staff. Our research shows that Portland's current staffing is one of the lowest per councillor staffing levels among peer cities. Comparable cities average two to four staffers per councillor. Furthermore, one staff per councillor is only half of what the previous council adopted in its organizational structural resolution over a year ago. Research also shows that Portland's total combined staffing levels for a presiding officer, shared legislative, and operation staff is otherwise likewise among the lowest of peer cities.
Thank you. Staffing must accommodate the basic functions of both individual councillors and the city council as a whole. In the new form of government, councillors need support for both legislative policymaking and budgetary analysis and adoption, now solely the council's responsibility. Furthermore, the new district-based council must have the staff to support constituent service and community engagement within their districts. The GTAC debated but ultimately decided against recommending a specific number of increased staff. Our primary point is that, based on research, no other city has this low of a level of staffing as Portland does. The GTAC declined to weigh in on where the funding for additional staffing should be found. The city budget office outlined several strategies to the previous city council at a budget work session about how to fund these expenses, and we defer to the city budget office's expertise on that. The new government strives for more efficient and targeted service delivery, and constituents expect participatory accountable government through their city's councillors. We believe that to optimize your new roles, you need adequate support and funding, of course, and we strongly recommend that you do pass increased funding for the council. And since I do have a little bit of extra time, I will say, not on this agenda, but I want to appreciate you all for this early in the process, making council meetings more accessible to everyone by having some meetings at night. That was also a GTAC recommendation. We appreciate you acting on that so early in the process. So thank you so much.
Thank you both for your comments. And thank you both for all the work you put into your recommendations. We appreciate that guidance as we move forward.
Next up, we have Terry Harris.
Thank you for being here with us.
I'm Terry Harris from Hillsdale. I am also a member of GTAC. Those guys that just were up here did a great job, so I'm going to be super brief and let you get on with the business of the day. I did want to just emphasize that you have different categories of staffing, and you're only addressing one of those categories in what you're doing tonight. You have big problems in your other categories as well, for your operations staff, your legislative staff, shared staff, and staff for the presiding officer of this body, just sort of to keep the legislative engine running. We, just going to make that point, that that's going to be still out there until you address it. And you have committees coming up later here, too. I'm sorry. I do that every time. You're going to talk about committees. The committees are going to need staffing in all of those areas. So I just emphasize that you're not done. This is a difficult thing you have to do that was just landed on your plate. It's not your fault, but governance is not an option. You need, you need the mechanisms to make it work. Thanks.
Thank you for being here and for your work on GTAC, and thank you for that closing and that reminder.
Next up, we have Ervin Siverson, followed by Alan Combs. Alan Combs?
Thank you, President Perty Gurney, and councillors. My name's Alan Combs. I'm a pronunciate him. I'm a resident of District Three, and I will start off by thanking the councillors or the leadership for making it clear that, at least as of tonight, the Portland Environmental Management Organization, PIMO, and I guess some of the Houseless Services are not on the chopping block. That said, I'm coming to you today to recommend that you not move forward with the proposal to add 15 full-time equivalents, or FTEs. And I'd just like to point out a couple of things. So, the, when the Charter Reform Commission put out their recommendations, they did not signal that the, your city council would cost this much. They didn't really signal the need for three to four staff per councillor. So when you say you need to do the work that the city wants, I agree, you're all now seated, and you need to do your work, but it's not really what Portlanders expected when they approved charter reform, because the true cost of a 12-member councillor that's full-time wasn't really ever communicated. And although I very much appreciate the work at GTAC, and I've supported their work as a citizen, and I think their recommendations on benchmarking were important and accurate, I don't think they really explore whether the comparable city councillors are all full-time staff, like, full-time paid councillors like you all are. And so what I would just suggest for today is that maybe you propose some incremental funding to improve shared services. I heard councillor Avalos propose maybe one additional staff per office. I think Portlanders need to see you operate in accordance to fashion in your districts, because right now, the idea that you have three councillors just simply running their little fiefdoms now with two staff, at, you know, basically a budgetary cost of almost, you know, the round number is a million dollars a person FTE, right? So at that level, this is a very high coverage cost for a decision-making organization for a city of 640,000. And I don't think GTAC would dispute that, actually. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments and for being here today. Councillor Zimmerman, we do have more public testimony.
I'm aware. I would request just a moment to clarify. We clarified the PIMO piece.
Okay.
I would say additional erroneous information that was in that terrible memo was the indication that all this money was just for a singular FTE, and I think it has led a lot of us astray. And so I would apologize that that occurred. And so, thinking of this in terms of overall numbers versus, certainly, I would not want out there that a million-dollar FTE exists anywhere in the globe in this proposal, and I think that it's, again, missing.
Sorry, you said a half a million, then, right? It's, it's, it's a lot of money, and it's not what was originally advertised when the Charter Reform Commission.
I'm not trying to debate. I'm just trying to clarify the piece of information.
You're clarifying what I just said, so I'm responding, but thank you.
Yeah.
I believe what councillor Zimmerman is referring to is that there were a few things discussed in a memo that went out, one of which was the total cost here, and one of which was a staffing number, and those two things didn't actually go together. The total number in this proposal was a round number for councillors to work within on potentially district offices, potentially constituent outreach, potentially staff, some combination thereof. I believe we have a number of additional testifiers tonight.
We'll try Ervin Siverson. Ervin? Okay. Taylor Boudreau? David Gray?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. My name is David Gray. I live in the Stadium neighborhood in District Four. We all know that the city is projecting a shortfall of $27 million. We are now two weeks into your administration, and you're proposing to add 4.5 million to increase your staff for six months. According to the city's chief financial officer, to make these changes permanent would actually cost 12 million per year. That is almost half the shortfall, right there. We hear you talking about government accountability, fiscal responsibility, shared sacrifice, and we are comparing that, those words, with the actions that you take. You've been in office two weeks. How could you possibly know that your staffing needs are a higher priority than the million other things that need to be prioritized? For example, our police force is one of the most understaffed in the country. 4.5 million dollars would pay the salaries of 50 police officers. 12 million dollars would fund 150 police salaries. Is increasing the city council staff more important than hiring police officers? Is it more important than cleaning the trash off our city streets? Is it more important than funding shelters, deflection centers, and neighborhood programs? In hard times, you may do. You do more with less, more with less. I'm not saying that you don't need this money or that you wouldn't use it well. What I am saying is that you should not make this decision today. Please, take the time to understand your own staffing needs within the broader context and make your case for this alongside all of the city's many competing priorities. You made a lot of promises, and we look forward to actions on those things. But none of you made promises about increasing city council staff or spending more money on administration, bureaucracy, and bloat. We voted for you. We are rooting for you. We appreciate you. Give us a reason to trust you when you say that you believe in fiscal responsibility and shared sacrifice. Give us a reason to believe in you. Take the time to figure out what the most pressing issues are and where the money is most needed. I urge you to vote no on this supplemental budget ordinance. And I do want to thank you for making this happen in the evening. I think that is, I agree with the person who said earlier that that's a very important thing and very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gray, for joining us this evening.
Next up, we have Rob Martino, followed by Robert Butler.
My name is Rob Martino. I am a city employee. I work in the Portland Water Bureau. I'm also the president of my union, ASME-189, and first vice president of the Northwest Oregon Labor Council. I provided the clerk with written copies of testimony that I believe Lori Wimmer has sent me to deliver that she may have also submitted online, and that provides some analysis of comparative legislative bodies that I will let you read for yourself. I don't need to read her words. You're entirely capable. It's regrettable that the prior city council failed to adequately staff this legislative body. As a unionist, I support the Portland City Councillors Union's demand for adequate staffing and resources to do the job our city has asked you to do. This is not a negotiation. Let's imagine for a minute, in a main break repair, I remove 30 yards of material, roughly two dump trucks. And as we make that main repair, I say, get me two more, two trucks of rock, and my supervisor says, you got one. Figure it out. I'm sorry that that's the position that our formal counsel, that our former counsel put you in. I support this. I support workers having the tools to do their jobs. I'm in a similar fight. You all know that I represent 1,100 other city employees that are asking for a fair contract that will ensure 1,100 people continue to deliver city services. I understand this is controversial and that you're asking for more money, money that would make our council a million dollars a month, and that's okay. It's what it costs for good governance. Let's find the money. Let's deliver the council Portland asks for and frankly, that we all deserve. Last night, our mediation in our contract fight ended abruptly after a mediated proposal that was anti-union, divisive, shortsighted, and lazy. Simple things like a jailside premium for hazards experienced in that space, back pay and pay parity where the city is not in alignment with the state's pay equity laws. These are things that we have had to deliver numerous tort claims notices in order to help the city be the employer it thinks it is. I'm frankly a little surprised that your agents at the bargaining table have upstaged the motivation and the work and the organization and demonstration of my members last Thursday, but they have. I'm left assuming that they must have already delivered their notice and have found gameful employment elsewhere at the offensive nature of what was delivered last night. For you and I both to have what we need is about 3/16th of 1% of this city's budget. We can find that money, and I encourage you to have us all have a safe workplace. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Martino. Thank you for your support and for sharing with us that experience.
Next up, we have Robert Butler, followed by Dr. Dennis Scholar.
I'm Robert Butler, Portland native. I actually have the same feeling that we are jumping way ahead of ourselves with the analysis. analysis presented to us. And the analysis is, it's hard to even get straight what the numbers are listening to this group now, because I don't think we've had the communication or internal communication to bring this forward in the matter that the public is hoping for. And I'll remind you that back when this is on the ballot that we approved, we were approving something very experimental, and with the possibility that we are creating the best city council arrangement in the country, and also the possibility of the worst in the country. And there's a lot of people who left the city knowing that they think it's the worst. But we were promised that for $900,000, or maybe $9 million, which in itself, for the budget of the city of Portland budget officers, to even put something on the ballot with a range of something, "Well, this will cost you from $900,000 to $9 million," that we should even, that should even be on the ballot for people to judiciously vote on. And now, we have these numbers floating around here, which really scare me. And I can do the math that is analyzed, we're talking 12 million dollars, no matter how you cut it, and you hope it's perpetual, and though we're being told, "This is the bare-bones minimum. We have no idea how much we need. We just know we're buried." And what is, where do we end up? And I ask you, where do we start? How much have we spent so far on this? So far? We were promised 9 million tops. We're way over that already, and we're talking about another 12 million. And so, we're not ready for this. And we were promised good governance, but we were promised good governance for a price. And the price is a sham, because we're way, 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 way over that. And so, better communication to the public. Where are we now? What have we spent? What does this cost? And how can we be efficient in going forward before we make these rash decisions? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and your time.
Next up, we have Dr. Dennis Schuller, followed by Janice Thompson.
I'm one of those Oregonians that read the article in the Oregonian about the budget shortfall. I'm sorry you guys are going through that. I think you all are really dedicated to doing a good job. By the way, a shout-out to District 3 councilors. I hope I get to know you. We have, in Woodstock, really faced some dire consequences with some of the homeless camps. I've had people defecate in front of my property, a lot of needles around, kids have been threatened. It's been really quite horrific. The one thing I'm going to end saying is that our people that do the cleanup are phenomenal. They do a great job. You have great employees. And I think sometimes we don't recognize the wonderful job they do. Corinne is one of the people that's the coordinators for the homeless camp. And I can't tell you how many times that I've called her, and she's taken and cleaned things up, and a week later, Woodstock looks much better. Please recognize them. So, I'm one of those that also came down and saying, "Don't cut the program that's so important for keeping our wonderful Woodstock neighborhood clean, and thanks for all the hard work you all doing. I'm really impressed with you. I've learned a lot tonight already from being here." I'm under three minutes.
Thank you for that time back, and thank you for being here, and our apologies, my apologies, that you and others didn't have the full information about what we were doing tonight to be able to know that we weren't looking at cutting those programs, but it's always good to hear that city staff are doing a wonderful job out there. We know that's the case, and we know that they also don't always get enough recognition.
That is really true. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Next up, we have Janice Thompson, followed by Bridge Crane Simka-Johnson.
I'm Janice Thompson, testifying this evening as an individual who has been a close observer of the charter review and the implementation process. Related to some of the comments about cost, I just think the challenges of estimating the kind of transformational change long needed for over 100 years was basically impossible. So, you know, in terms of people saying, "Oh, it costs this much," or "We were promised this," I would set that thought aside. Specifically on, before you, I support adding one person per councilor office, per councilor office. I mean, that was not only what was originally proposed by the transition team, it was also consistently recommended, as you heard, by the GTAC and their research. I don't support adding three positions to the mayor's budget. The current staffing level in that office is exactly what was recommended by the transition team. It was what was funded by the previous council that included the former mayor. So especially given budget constraints, this element of what's before you seems premature. Under the commission form of government, the mayor and commissioners had two full-time jobs, legislative and administrative. I think that contributed to the staff sizes in both of those offices. I think we need to stop comparing previous staffing levels to what we need in the future, because now each elected official has one job. You all have a huge, big, full-time job legislatively, but at least you're not also trying to run bureaus and needing staff to help with that. The mayor has, you know, a whole new administrative branch, which appropriately is now reached, you know, kind of moved into the modern era of municipal management with the city administrator and deputy over service areas. And so the administrative branch has grown, but it's grown with professional public-sector managers. So, that influenced, I think that you just need to keep that in the back of your mind when you think about mayoral budget considerations. So, looking ahead, you know, either retain, I do think for the next budget year, you should probably, you know, either get to or retain, like, the two councillor, two staff per councillors, the current mayoral, I mean, there's just these budget constraints kind of moving into that. I do think that the emphasis, if anything, should be on adding staff capacity related to committees. Those are the people who, with policy experience, who are going to have institutional continuity and expertise development over time, and that's a real major priority.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We appreciate your time this evening.
Bridge Crane Simka-Johnson.
Thank you. May I use my name as a reference? Holy catch-22, bad person. You know, when I talked on the first item, there was no link to the slide presentation. On this agenda item, I think we get two exhibits and a thing. They're not persuasive. If you all are feeling understaffed, which I think is a very legitimate feeling, and if you're understaffed, you wouldn't be able to present what we need to see to rally and cheerlead for you, which is, hey, instead of just these two little lists of FTE things, tell us what you do. Say, "Our staff receives 27 emails per day, 270 emails per day, 34 phone calls, 340 phone calls." There's lots, I don't know if you've heard of this thing, but it's called MBA, a management. So there are professionals who can prepare proposals that tell us about workloads and stuff like that. And maybe I missed it, but as you work to get the public to understand why you deserve more money than we paid the previous batch of city councillor-commissioners, I think it's a reasonable expectation for us to be like, "We need to know what this money does." Not just that it creates FTE, as we had the little exchange here with Mr. Zimmerman in the prior testimony. FTE is sort of a meaningless thing when we don't talk about base salary. The FTE for the young 18-year-old who works for the Parks Department is different than it is for a bureau director that gets like $300,000 a year, I think, for the water bureau, I think is the highest-paid one. So, maybe we don't need the improved transparency and understanding, but since this whole budget item has been couched in a sense of public concern, maybe public outrage, I hope that you'll be able to pass something today and tell us how much more staffing each councillor will have. And it seems like we have a process problem of, if it passes today, do we really know where the money comes from, or does the city administrator have to report back later exactly what budget items have had to take the cut? But generally, put both information in front of us so we can support the understanding that the one staffer that you have is going to be run into the ground very quickly. Good to see you back, Mr. Dunphy. When I go to see my primary care physician, there's a portrait of Nick Fish, it was others, on the wall inside Prism Care Access. And when we talk more about permanent supportive housing, I know as he left this world, he was working very hard to make sure that it be a real thing, not a buzzword.
Thank you for those comments and for being here, and I hope that we can make the case to you and to all Portlanders. What we have up on the agenda are some technical budget documents, definitely not the persuasive case that we know that we need to make to Portlanders.
That completes testimony.
Okay. With the completion of public testimony, Mr. Mayor, before we go into council comments and potential proposals of amendments here, did you want to just say a few words about the proposal that you have included?
Council President, it's going now. Some comments and testimony, council president, vice president, and council. I appreciate this opportunity. The experts on what is needed to pass legislation, respond to constituents, and effectively leave the city of Portland are in this room. In fact, they are seated before me. City councilors are the experts on the staffing and resources you need to best serve our city. I don't have to tell you how consequential staffing decisions are. You're not just thinking to yourselves, you're setting a path and a precedent that may well be followed for years to come. Everyone has had a chance to do their homework. You've researched how peer cities have higher staffing per councillors than Portland. You've read the Government Transition Advisory Committee memo to your predecessors, which stated that the current staffing level is, and I quote, "not enough to run a city." You know the budget constraints we're up against, and the sacrifices must be shared. We've talked about it for many weeks. We've talked about it for many months. But most of all, you know, responding to constituents and legislating on the critical issues requires good people by your side. Our staff, past, present, and future, are the unsung heroes making possible the hard work we all signed up to do. I've asked myself the same difficult questions, and I request that the mayoral staff be cut down, not from 20 to 5, but from 20 to 8. My responsibilities remain largely the same as my predecessor, but my staffing does not yet reflect the realities of the job at hand. I want every Portlander who reaches out to me to be heard, and I want them to know that they are being heard, and I want the same as you want. You can't put people first if you don't hear their voices, and if you don't have the resources to respond. And I want good people by my side to help me make the right decisions on issues that will impact the city I care so deeply about. City Administrator Jordan and I are here to assist you. We're here to work with you to the best of our ability and will support the decision that you make internally with our administration. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a proposal before us. We also, I know, have each heard a lot from the community, and I know that some of you have had conversations with a few others and have mentioned to me that you might have changes that you'd like to make tonight. I think we have three categories of items that we're talking about. We have our staffing needs. We have the conversation about our in-district footprint, and we have the many other things that are needed, such as constituent outreach and the funds to be able to do the rest of our work. And I've heard from a few colleagues that they want to make sure that what we're talking about isn't specific FTE, but that whole bucket of what we need to do, knowing that in some parts of the city, that footprint is more important, and in some parts of the city, that outreach or the staff to do so are more important. I would like to kind of open us up broadly now. I see a couple of folks with comment, and maybe we can start by just putting some ideas out there. I would like to invite up, because I think we will need them, our fiscal staff, DCA Berry, and our CFO, Ruth Levine. And Mike Jordan, I may put you on notice that we may have some questions for you as well as we move through this conversation. So we have staff here on hand who can help us as needed. Counselor Smith, would you like to kick us off?
Yes, Madam President. As one of two councilors who have been an elected official before, like you all talked about earlier, Monmouth County is a legislative, a total legislative body, and they have three staffers, and they have some concerns about being understaffed, understanding that we do need to communicate with our district. I'm a councilperson from District 1, which is the furthest from the city of Portland and City Hall. Our communities expected us to have district offices and to be able to communicate with them in a way that we have never been able to communicate before. Candace Avalos, Jamie Dunphy, Loretta Smith, they virtually have more representation today than they have ever had in the history of Portland. Good government, good governance, it costs. You cannot create a city administrator's office with a bunch of infrastructure without putting infrastructure in your policy side. You cannot expect us to communicate with other offices if we have no one to communicate with. My staffer, my one staffer who lives in my district, and he travels to work every single day, he is my communications press person, he is my policy director, he is my communications and constituent services director, he is also the person that drafts the resolutions that come before you, understanding that we know one of the top issues in this community is public safety and housing and homeless. We're not suggesting to take money from either one of those places, but what we are suggesting is, we have a $13.8 million contingency that we can actually take those funds out of that contingency fund, $4.6 million, to be able to fund us at the level that we need to be, that would also pay for some of those things, like offices, and being able to, like we went to the meeting the other night, the EPAP meeting, they had food for people, they had daycare to watch the children while they had a government conversation. If we cannot communicate in a way that's meaningful, that's effective, and we're overworking the one staffer that we, I'm afraid that my staffer is going to leave. I'm afraid that he's going to be so burnt out in the next month that he's going to leave. I can't afford for you to leave, Elijah. I can't. And so for me, I have, I have seen what it looks like when you can have good staff, and I want to make sure that Eric Zimmerman, who I worked with over at the county, can give you an example of what the day in the life of a city commissioner or county commissioner is. It is early in the morning and late into the night. Me and Jamie Dunphy were over in East Portland until about 9 o'clock, and we talked to every last person until every person got their question answered. So, I implore you all to... So I implore you all to really think about good, effective, good governance, and understand that we are not trying to take the people's money or to expand our operating budget. This is money that's already in the queue, and we will not, and I will not personally, take money from Portland Solutions or homeless or housing, ever. But we do need some assistance.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Counselor Dunphy.
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I want to uplift absolutely everything that my fellow District One colleague, Counselor Smith, said. I want to be directly responsive to some of the testimony we've heard, and I want to be a little bit more directly responsive to the testimony we have heard broadly. I've heard tonight that the presentations were not made available online, that there were not clear memos explaining why what we are doing here tonight, and there was confusion around process. This is partially an example of the fact that we do not have the capacity to be able to think through the details that we need to be able to think through. And it's embarrassing. It's embarrassing to know that the PowerPoint presentation wasn't available online for people to know. It's embarrassing to know that I have been spending 40-plus hours a week here in City Hall when I have my constituents in District One who are not coming to District, coming to City Hall in order to seek grievance from their government. They are not seeing themselves in these, this building, and so they do not show up. In response to the testimony from Janice Thompson, who, it's lovely to see her, we don't have just one job. We did lose the executive function. The previous commissioners did have to have an executive function over bureaus, but we don't have that. But we do not have just one job. We have legislative responsibilities in this building. We have committee work, but we also have deep work that is necessary for our constituents to help try and make sure that government works for the people. And that does not happen necessarily just from this seat. We must bring government to District One, and I must be allowed, able to allow my one staffer to go to those communities where they are not seeing the results of government. And if you look at this last election, the voters overwhelmingly voted for change, but the voters in District One overwhelmingly did not vote. We have so much work to bring government to the people in my community, I simply cannot do it if I am tied to this building for 40 hours plus per week. We must do better on communicating what we are doing and why we are doing it, and why the people who are in this audience and the people watching at home and the hundreds of thousands of people who are not watching this procedure right now should care about having good government. The number of emails, phone calls, and actions that I must make in a day is not less because there are 12 of us. I do not have one-third of the work to my neighbors because there are three of us representing my district. And the number of decisions that I must make is not fewer simply because my salary is higher than the predecessors. We have to make these decisions. This is hard work, and our city is in a moment of crisis. We are not choosing to sacrifice anything to address that crisis in order to try and do this. This is about us moving numbers around on a piece of paper, and we will do the work that we were sent here to do only if we are adequately staffed and able to appropriately and timely respond to that. So I'm eager to move this forward, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Counselor Dunphy. Counselor Mario.
Thank you. Counselor Dunphy, you're such a great speaker. I'm not going to say anything as beautiful or impassioned as you just said right now, and Counselor Smith as well. Thank you for your comments. I want to uplift what you guys have said because it's true that District One has unique needs as we're having this budget conversation, and I want to highlight that we're here to support you guys as well in that, that those people in outer East Portland deserve representation, deserve in district offices more than, I would say, anyone else. You know, I think we all want district offices for every district, but if a choice has to be made tonight, I feel very strongly that District One needs to be prioritized because of where you are and the outreach that's needed to be done. So I just want to say thank you for saying that and for fighting for your folks over there. I want to give a real-life example about what our office work looks like because I don't think it's very tangible to people. Back when I worked in a council office, I did constituent services work, and there was a point where there were some big news stories coming out, and council offices received 75,000 emails in a month about one topic, 75,000, and I was the lone person answering those emails. They did not all get answered, mind you, because it was physically not possible. But right now, we have really been reduced so severely that it is impossible for us to address constituent needs, and that's the thing that's going to impact everyone the most. We have a shared constituent services person who also does the work of an executive assistant via scheduling, who also answers constituent emails, who also does admin work. That staffer themselves is already severely overstaffed. Anyone who does executive assistant work and scheduling for one city councillor knows that that is a full-time job, let alone doing it for three separate people. That means that your emails and your calls are not getting answered as quickly or as diligently as they need to be. That also means that you are having your questions answered by one person that represents the district and not your individual council members. And we have very different perspectives across our council districts as far as the things that we want to push, the things we want to do. So you're not getting as refined information about what each of your city council members wants to do, and that prevents you from being an effective organizer. That prevents you from putting pressure on us as elected officials to get the outcomes that you want. That prevents us also from communicating to you what we're trying to push and getting your help. You know, maybe when I'm on a transportation committee, I'll want to call on the bike advocates to do something with me, but I need to be able to communicate that to you so that you can help us push those things. So I think that it has been framed as this desire to just boost our budgets, and that is not at all true, and that's not at all what I've seen from our colleagues. This is really a plea so that we can serve you as best as possible, and I just wanted to leave you with that one tangible example so that you know what's happening behind the scenes. You're also always able to look at people's calendars, so they are publicly available online, so you can see what we're doing, who we're communicating with, how many meetings we have. And I would also note that anytime there's a blank spot on our calendars, I see everybody running around back and forth, having negotiations, discussions. There is no free time. There's not a spare moment to breathe. You're lucky if you get a chance to eat. So we want to do the work for you, and I hope that, you know, we'll make a diligent budget decision, and I'll have some questions to ask on the budget as well, but that's the lens that I will be approaching this from. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm not going to kind of reproduce the comments that my counselors have made about being available for constituency services or the kind of shared, you know, kind of the model of a shared staff and how burdensome that is. I'm going to speak to the economic question because I think that's why I was elected, because I have a certain expertise in that. I did hear a lot of concern from the public about fiscal responsibility and this idea that, you know, we are in a very tight budgetary year, and that's no question. I have no dispute with that. But just for context, we have something like an $8.2 billion adopted budget, maybe like six and a half, 6.3 net of intergovernmental transfers. It's a very large budget for a city the size of Portland. And so I enter this task with this idea that city council needs to have the independent capacity to look at that budget ourselves proactively and then ask the very hard questions about what decisions do we make today that will have long-term fiscal impacts tomorrow. For example, last city council approved six new TIF districts, okay? That's six new tax increment financing districts which will have long-run budgetary impacts to our city's general revenue. That may or may not have been a good idea. I'm not here to litigate that right now, but what I am saying is if we are in a position where we don't have time to do our independent thinking with our staff to say, you know, what is the cost-benefit proposition here, and what are the, what are the costs down the road that we haven't considered, then we're always going to be sort of in a reactive mode where we have to sort of say, well, I guess we have to choose between one or two options that the administration has presented with us, which, again, may be the right choices, but we'll never know if we don't have that capacity. And so I have that skill set. Many of my colleagues have that skill set, so it's not really a good use of my time if I'm, you know, doing things that I could hire staff to do as well. And that's the first thing an economist will tell you is, you know, why fix your toilet when you can hire someone to do it for you because, you know, your opportunity cost is so high? Anyway, I'll leave that there. I'll finish by saying that we were elected to do robust constituent services and committee work, and specifically, if we want the budget ultimately to reflect the policy priorities of our community, we have to have the time and the resources to bring those folks into this, these chambers, into our meeting places where we do committee work, to inform that work that will ultimately determine a budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Avalos.
Thank you. A couple of notes and want to echo everything that my fellow counselors have said. I think it's important to remember that in the old commissioner system, the commissioners were really buried in bureaucracy and administration, which was actually what was leading to the extreme dissatisfaction of the people with their lack of accessibility, their lack of constituent services. So that means that even though our roles do not include those specific duties, it does not equal a vacuum of duties. In fact, I would argue we have way expanded duties in this new form of government. Portlanders are asking for representation, engagement, and access, and as Counselor Smith has said, good governance costs money. And it's important that we make smart decisions about how to spend our money and understand that spending money for the people, this is us spending money for the people. It's not for us. I am prepared today, as we continue to discuss this, to support a package that could provide a stopgap for the rest of this fiscal year, understanding that we will need to continue this larger discussion during the budget process, and hopefully that could inform, you know, over the next few months, what really we are going to need in a future staffing model. But I just wanted to signal that I would like us to move towards, at a minimum, adding another staffer. I know, definitely agree with commissioners, with counselors, that my staffer is incredibly stretched, and it's, you know, and I'm stretched, frankly. I'm overwhelmed by the inbox and all of the requests, and so it's not just the staffer, it's also us as counselors that are feeling stretched by our responsibilities, and having more staff is going to help us reach the people. Thank you.
Counselor Zimmerman.
Thank you. I have been a chief of staff in two political offices that were district representatives, one in as far east as Multnomah County can get and one directly across the river. I've worked in this mayor's office. I've been a deputy city manager, sitting in that seat in two other cities. In any courtroom, I think I would qualify as an expert witness. And it is a question about the staffing that I posed to everybody who ran for council president, if they'd be willing to put what is a difficult measure forward, because I think it's part of the role of the president, is that there's going to be some difficult things, and I think that the president sits in a role to be able to do it. And I asked each of you that, and you all were willing to engage in this, and I appreciate it. And so to you, Madam President, I do appreciate that you've brought this forward. I think it's been deliberate. I think it's been well thought out. I think the prorated factors are important. So my concerns come overall for the staffing and the effectiveness of this council. I have concerns about the president's role, but I'm willing to address those later in the budget form that Counselor Avalos speaks of. Having been in the mayor's office in previous administrations, I have concern around the mayor's capacity. In an organization that turns in $200 million a year at the end of the year of unspent dollars, has 800-plus vacancies right now, I think that in this consolidation and this movement to this new government, that no consolidation occurred in any part of this city except in the two areas of oversight, the publicly elected areas, in the mayor's office and on this council. And we are the ones who represent the public. The mayor represents the entire city. I represent a district. I don't know who oversights, who has oversight and who has enforcement to ever talk about $200 million of unspent funds every year and 800 vacancies every year if we were the ones who were consolidated. I think that was deliberate. I think it was bad planning. I think in December, the reason I asked all the council presidents about a staffing package is because, as an expert witness, I knew that we had been kneecapped. I feel very strongly about that. And it has been a history over this transition of small moves that have added to a major cut, and I think that's the problem here. And so in a body that took nine votes to find a council president, I'm warmed by the fact that across the comments around this dais is that there's general support. I don't know what the final number will be, but there is general support. And we have a model at the, across the river with our Multnomah County commissioners, who are district representatives, who, they're not told by the organization, you can hire this many FTE, or you can have this kind of office. They are given a fund. That fund is the responsibility of that chief of staff and that commissioner, to not bust through it, to spend it wisely, to spend it legally, and you're accountable then to your districts, to your voters, on how well you spent that money, if you did or if you didn't, but you can't go over it. I think that's important. I think we need to move that direction. I think that the way in which I have heard all 12 of us talk about how we're going to spend time in our district is amazing. I think that's what's going to make this transition of government survive, because protecting this former government, protecting the districts, protecting the fact that the council has oversight and representative, we are the representatives of the public. The city administrator is a great professional, but at the end of the day, he's an organizational professional, an organizational representative, and we, the other 13 electeds up here, are the representatives of the public. To do that well, I think each of you should have the ability to bring on staff that you think complements your skills. I certainly need to bring on some staff that complement my skills to do this job at the highest peak that I can, to go from Selwood to the Northwest Industrial Area to downtown. I don't want to focus too much on what I think has happened previously, but this is the right action to move forward. I'm ready for the rest of the discussion, but I will move for the vote as soon as possible.
Thank you, Counselor, and thank you for the note on time. Counselor Canal.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I want to say I agree with you, Madam President, that we were not set up for success. I think your problem statement is accurate. I'm prepared to help find a solution collectively to it. I got a couple big-picture notes, and I think when we get into more on this, I have some specific ideas as well. I disagree with some of the framing that's been presented here. This proposal is not about me or my staff or about anybody else up here. This is about you, Portlanders watching at home and watching in this room, and the government that you deserve. The testimony earlier was correct. None of us ran specifically on increasing council staffing, but I think a lot of us talked about good governance as we ran. I personally said that being a city that works, that's our city slogan, requires being a city that listens, and that you deserve a government that listens to you. You are entitled to be heard, and you have a right to see your policy priorities reflected in city policy. And we can't do that if we can't be in five places at once, if we can't respond to all the emails coming in, if we can't meet with you and listen to you and build solutions to your problems and have the time to check them with attorneys, to run them by our colleagues, and get an idea of what that's going to look like before it gets here. So that's, I think, what this is about, and I want to keep that in the front of my mind, that the people that I'm here to worry about are not in this building, but there are 155-ish thousand people in District Two. I am going to support district offices in the long run, beginning with District One. I think District Two is just behind. I'd prefer to look at siting for those offices as the goal for this fiscal year and seek funding for the ongoing expenses in the future, but I'd be very happy to see District One go first on that. I think that makes sense. I support a small number of additional shared staff, solely the ones that provide staffing to committees and the legislative support there. And then just one other note, fiscal responsibility is a core value, and I believe in it strongly. It does not only mean less spending. It does often mean that. It also means better spending, and that means spending on our highest priorities and not on lower priorities, like out-of-state contractors that we pay to think for us. I have a specific contract in mind, just one that would cover one-third of this if we were to terminate it. And there are hundreds of those contracts around the city. And this is not an either-or with labor either, and I really want to thank Rob Martineau and Lori Wimmer for making that clear. And I'll stop here and get into the specifics as this progresses. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Canal. Counselor Smith.
Madam President, I would like to suggest that you change the language on your current ordinance and change it from the city administrator's budget to the contingency budget to allow us to restore funding to the 23, 24 levels of the city council, because we have certainly been defunded. And in this marginalized position, it has put us in a space where we can't plan properly. If we take a vote on this, and if we can get nine votes to make this an emergency, we can act fairly quickly. we can act fairly quickly. So I move that we add those changes and take a vote.
With permission, Counselor Ryan is in the queue and has not had a chance to comment. Could I ask you to withdraw your motion to allow him to comment, and then we'll come back to you to re-propose that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Ryan.
Gee, this better be good. This is really awkward, because I've been in this conversation now three times, last spring, when we had the big budget conversation, and all of you, as my witness know, I was speaking, I feel very supported right now, unlike last spring, and there was one other commissioner that had empathy for adding more staffing. But when you vote on the big budget, as we all know, you don't get everything you want, and this was at the top of my indigestion, but it went on. And then all of you started running for office, and you must have thought, gee, this is going to be fun with one staffer. And then the bump came along, that's the fall bump, and as Jonas knows, I tried really hard to get the carryover money, the money that was not spent by commissioners' offices in '23, '24, and the money that was not spent in the first six months to carry over. I felt really good about that one. But that also got blocked by three of my colleagues. So here I am, wanting to jump up and down on one hand, but also saying, whoa, this is a little much. So I'm going to pause and say that I've always been aligned with the G-Tax minimum recommendation of two staffers per counselor at this time, and I do think we need to take time to see how this overlapping staffing works out. I don't know what I don't know yet. The committees, the meetings haven't started, I haven't experienced what it's like to share the staffing in that more tangible level. I have noticed that all of the people who are doing our calendaring are working really hard, and their nonverbal over this past week really dramatically changed with all four of them, so I can tell you that those jobs are too much for one person. And I do know that the constant complaint was, there's not enough constituent services. So I do think the combination of legislative work and constituent services is really big, and I'm grateful that we're not doing the executive oversight, and that did require at least two or three more staff members. So I do have a little bit of pushback, in all due respect, Counselor Smith, to restore to the exact same levels, because I do think the apple and the orange is there. So if you could follow that, that's my way of saying that I'm supportive of stopgap to get through this year, to experience the next couple months, so that we come into the new year with, in the budget process with more clarity. I also really appreciate Counselor Smith's going to the contingency. As Jonas knows, that's what we're trying to do in the fall bump process, and I got way off my notes, as you could probably tell, but I wanted to make sure that I covered as much of this as possible, and that's all you get at 809. All right, thanks.
Counselor Novick is up in the queue for the first time, and then we're going to go back to Counselor Smith.
So I'm not going to be a vote for this package, because I don't feel I know enough to take an informed vote. I totally understand everything my colleagues have said. When I first saw that we were going to get one staff person, I was shocked, and I quickly looked around and saw, well, in Denver, they have three, and in Seattle, they have three, and in San Francisco, they have three, and I didn't see how we could do this work with one staff person. But I asked my one-staff guy yesterday, do you feel totally snowed under yet, and he said, not yet. Now, I suspect that's because people in our district aren't making too many demands on me, because they figure, well, Novick's an old guy, what can we really expect? So I think other people have gotten more requests. So I don't really know yet how much more help my office will need, I don't know how much the committee offices will need, and I also don't feel like I know enough about where the money would come from. If it were 10 years ago, I would say, well, we can get some of the money by cutting the mounted patrol, which I always thought was rather ornamental and could be cut. But now there is no mounted patrols, but I can't say that. It may be that there's fat in the administrator's budget, but I don't know yet what that fat is. And I also know that we are going to be facing millions and millions of dollars in cuts in the overall budget, which mostly goes to police, fire, parks, and housing homeless services. So I just feel like I can't support this package until I have a better sense of what our internal needs are and a better sense of the other budget issues we're facing. I would support immediately adding a couple of staff, and I'd say more than one, to the council president's office, because I don't see how you can ask a council president to go toe-to-toe with the mayor with one person. And I would expect, I would support adding a couple of folks to the mayor's office, because I don't know how you can be mayor of a big city with just five people. And I would support, as a couple of other colleagues have said, adding the district office in District 1. So I don't think I'm going to get support for this slimmed-down proposal, but I could support that, and having it come from contingency, because I don't know at this point where else to take it from. But, so, I just wanted to, again, I don't expect to, I'm not offering a motion, because I don't expect a huge amount of agreement, but I just wanted to let people know where I am.
Counselor Clark, have you had an opportunity to speak? I didn't think so.
No, I haven't. Thank you, Madam President. Well, I really hesitate to say anything, because I think I'm going to start whining and apologizing to all the people who are emailing, asking for meetings that we can't keep up with. And I didn't want to whine, I think everybody's been very articulate, I don't have a lot to add, but just to say that it's impossible, it's absolutely impossible to do what we're expected to do as the people's branch of government. I'm very supportive and appreciative of what you've put forward here, and I will vote for it, to be clear. I think I whined a little bit last week about the committees, because I thought there were so many committees, I could not see how we would ever be able to be effective and spread ourselves so thin, which is another argument for having additional staff. I think I mentioned that we don't have legislative research, we don't have a legislative fiscal, there are lots of things, legislative council, there are a lot of things that we don't have, and we're about to make committee assignments tonight, and some of us are on four committees. How is this going to be possible without additional help? I don't know. Constituent relations, serving as a chair or vice chair, or just a member of a committee, and then providing the kind of oversight that we're expected to provide over the city, it's impossible without additional help. So I'm sorry I'm whining, but to all those people that are emailing, that I haven't responded to, the phone calls, the requests for meetings, I'm really sorry. We'll get to it eventually. Thank you.
Hopefully quite soon. I see a number of other people in the queue, but I did promise that once everybody had an opportunity to speak, we would get back to Counselor Smith. And Counselor Smith, you put forward...
A motion. Yes.
And your motion had two parts, amending the current proposal to pull funds from the contingency fund as opposed to pulling funds from the city administrator's office. You also talked about restoring to '23, '24 budgets, and I believe that's the number that we are working off of already.
Kind of, sorta. It's a little under that, but I, just in general, it is restoration back to those numbers. But what you put forward, I would urge my colleagues to support, and with the change of having the money come from contingency instead of the city administrator's office, I think that we, you know, I don't know if we could get nine votes to do this as an emergency, but I think it is so important, and it's critical, that we get started. People have an expectation that we're going to be up to speed right now, and I think it's very egregious to expect us not to expect the best from our own staffs and not to treat them as if they are expendable, because they're not. And as we listen to folks, and I also want to thank Rob Martineau, that was a big, huge step for the president of Afsmi, I don't know if y'all know about this, for him to come up here in budget negotiations to say that he supports what we're talking about? That's a big deal. And I see us moving closer together when we can see each other's, what we're trying to do. And so I thank you, Rob, for your support. And I would just like to say that if we could put something to a vote, we've probably, we've talked about this, and as Commissioner Clark said, Counselor Clark, that we will seem like we're whining, but I just want us to take a vote, let's see where we're at.
So I think there are two separate things. There is the potential for you to make a motion to amend the ordinance to Section 2, no?
Yes.
A1. In A. I'm sorry?
A1.
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 To hold the funding from contingency.
Yes, the 13.8 million.
So why don't you make that motion first, and then we can speak to the broader proposal?
Okay, perfect. I propose that we change this from the city administrator's budget to the contingency budget, and I think we all would have stomach for taking that from that pot of money. And do we take that vote first?
We need a second.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? And we do have our CFO here, if there are any technical questions. Any discussion? Counselor Zimmerman.
I am, thank you. I am a protector of the contingency, I think they're important, I've been at places where they had to be used. And when I look at it, in the time left in this fiscal year, I think this is the right move. So, full support.
Any other discussion?
Just clarification. So this is, right now, just to approve Counselor Smith's amendment to have it come from contingency.
Correct. A1 currently says decrease bureau operating expenses in the city administrator's office by $4,588,234 to balance. I believe that the technical language would be decrease the contingency fund by $4,588,234 to balance, is that correct?
Yes, so, sorry, Ruth Levine, I'm the budget director. Jonas Berry, the CFO, had another commitment that he had to leave for, but the, I would say, so if you're keeping the amount the same, all you need to change is that language that's currently says city administrator to say general fund contingency, so you could amend it to strike it and do decrease general fund contingency by the number. Limley, is that right?
Yes, I think it's clear, and the clerk has it. Yes.
Counselor Zimmerman?
That's for the larger comments.
Got it. Counselor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Ruth, good to see you. I wanted to make sure that I just heard, because we had this conversation not long ago, and it was a much smaller amount, and it was voted down, because we couldn't justify taking it out of contingency. Could you tell me a little bit more about what that really means?
About what, taking it?
About what this really means, like what are the consequences?
Yeah, sure, so...
Budget person, you have opinions on this?
Yeah, sure, happy to. So the general fund contingency is set by council every year, and typically it's been done in the fall bump, and so that's what we have this year. And it includes a couple of different accounts within it. There is what's called a policy set-aside account, there's unrestricted contingency, and then there's capital set-aside, at least those are the buckets we have allocated this year. The unrestricted contingency, we generally set at $3 million per year, and at this point in the fiscal year, I would avoid against using it, given the things that, you know, we may face in the rest of the fiscal year, we just need that, it's not a big buffer. And so the remainder of it is you're looking at policy set-aside and capital set-aside, based on what's currently in there. And so this year, in the fall bump, there's a number of line items, which I don't have a slide of right now, but I could get you, of what is in policy set-aside and what is in capital set-aside. The conversation, Counselor Ryan, in the fall bump was around sort of reducing some of the capital set-aside amounts, I would say. The reason that was the conversation then is because I would say they are the most flexible, in that there would be no current-year impact to reducing those amounts. It really is there to help the council with balancing the '25, '26 budget. So that is still kind of the most flexible pot of money, and, you know, that's frankly anywhere in the general fund at this point in the fiscal year. So that is probably what you would be looking at again, is reducing that capital set-aside account.
Thank you, Ruth. And I recall it was a number that was around 400K, or what was the...
The number that I believe that you had put forward was in that ballpark, I can't remember exactly what it was at that time, that was...
It was the 400K that was not spent by the commissioners' offices this year.
That's right, yes.
And we couldn't, that went into the capital contingency.
Yes, that's correct.
And that, and we voted that down three to two.
That's right.
President Pertilguini, may...
Just had to do a little bit of history for y'all.
I just want to make sure, because this is the budget, we're having to balance things, I want to make sure, do we need to amend any of the exhibits or add additional exhibits in order to effectuate Counselor Smith's amendment?
Yes, thank you, thanks, Limley. Yes, we do, so the amendment that you're putting forward, you just need to add, update Exhibit 1 to reflect this change.
I suspect we will have conversation about additional amendments.
Yeah.
Legally, can we vote on this amendment without those exhibits being updated, so long as those exhibits are updated before we vote on the full resolution?
Yes, and I think Ruth and I anticipate that once we have a sense of what all the amendments are, we're going to ask for a short recess in order to allow her to amend the exhibits, because those need to be complete for you to amend them and vote on the whole package.
I suspect when we're done with this portion, we will all need a recess, and I recognize that we have a number of bureau staff here and guests for things later in the agenda. I apologize. We are required to take up budget items first, which is why we are doing this this early in the agenda, despite knowing that we have guests here. Counselor Avalos, are you speaking to the motion?
Yes, it's a question. A question, my question is, can you project how much will be added to the contingency pot for FY '26? In other words, do you expect that the dollars we potentially use for this resolution would be replenished in the next budget?
So I can't project today what will be in the contingency pot in the fall of, essentially, we allocate that in the fall, so that would be normally, let's say, October of 2025. So I can't project what that looks like today, it's just too early in the fiscal year to really have any confidence in that. That being said, I think there are sort of leverage points to increase the amount of underspending in the current fiscal year, if that's what you're getting at. So, I mean, I think that's more a question for the city administrator than for me, but there, I mean, I think there's, sort of, there are a number of reasons, there are a number of ways that we build contingency. One is there's a certain amount of underspending that you want every year, it's actually, in the general fund, it's not that big, but you wouldn't want to be spending up to your limit, because you'd be in trouble. Another is sort of, I guess, true underspending, vacancy savings, external materials and services, underspending, and the like. So I think that is the place where there's room to sort of reduce those spending categories in the current fiscal year, and that would increase your contingency. And by sort of April, May, we will, by the time you all are taking up the approved budget, we will have a better sense of what we call the ending fund balance for the current fiscal year will look like. So, you know, between now and then, we'll get a little bit of a lens on that. Does that help?
Thank you.
Counselor Smith, is this to the motion?
Yes, to the motion. And Madam President, thank you so much. And I want to go back to what you, the question was asked about '25-'26. And under Oregon budget law, we can't talk about budgeting for '25-'26 while we're in '24-'25, because the idea is that everything that we are operating budget is supposed to be spent to the penny. But the real reality is, like Counselor Zimmerman said, we've been bringing over $200 million for the last four years that I've seen of underspending. So if history repeated itself, even in times of cutting, that it would suggest that we would have more money to bring over this '25-'26 year. But we can't talk about '25-'26 while we're in '24-'25.
So a couple of things, just to clarify, the sort of true general fund underspending this year was like 24 million? So I'm not entirely sure where the $200 million number is coming from, but we're happy to talk about that.
The carryover from unused FTEs, the beginning capital that we started with this year was $200 million.
That probably includes, like, fund balance for things like PSEF and the water and the sewer funds. So happy to talk about that more offline.
Yeah.
But the true general fund underspending is like 20 to 25 million dollars.
Right. And we're talking about restricted funds versus general funding. But I'd like to get to this point. And let's take a vote on whether or not we want to take this from the contingency or not.
I believe we have one more comment before we get to a vote. Counselor Green, do you want to?
I just want to make a comment for my colleagues. So when you're, at the beginning of a fiscal year, and you were forecasting, you have a lot of uncertainty. And so it's really important to kind of keep your contingency balance unencumbered at the beginning. But as you move through time, and you get closer to the end of your budgeting period, your uncertainty and the variation in risk gets narrower. We are very close. We're five months away from the end of the fiscal year. And so I feel very comfortable using that contingency set aside because this is one-time money for this fiscal year. Because that's the allowable use for that fund. So that's what I would offer to my colleagues.
Is that a legacy hand, Counselor Avalos?
Yes.
Any other comments before we have the clerk take role on the motion? Counselor Mario?
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay. Kealan, could you please take a vote?
Avalos?
Aye.
Yanfei?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
Aye.
Foyham and Lane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Pertogini?
Aye.
I know that Counselor Smith has expressed interest in another motion. I also have heard from a number of colleagues pieces of proposals. Counselor Zimmerman, you have your hand raised.
Yeah. This is a plea to Counselor Novick. So I hear you loud and clear. I really do. And I'm also hearing District 1 counselors loud and clear. I think that coming into office and throughout the last year, I heard a lot in the community at different times about having council or geographic-based offices. And for me, being the person who represents this real estate, that was never really a big, important thing to me. And so I didn't spend more than two brain cells on that, ever. And then I heard from all three of you. And I heard loud and clear. And then I heard from the other districts on that importance. And I, and I, I am going to support that in that I think that y'all need some space to figure out what that looks like. And what I would say, Counselor Novick, is that you might not be ready to make a staffing change yet. But I hope that we can support this because if you're not ready, or any one of the 12 of us is not ready to execute that, then I think you can turn it back in, and I think that's fine. But for those that are ready, and those that have a bigger ask, and for District 1 in East Portland, and I've said, I think a nod from District 4 occasionally is going to be an important part of this body. That would be my ask. And because I am trying to defer to what I think will be a better form of government for you all to hire up and staff up in that district differently, maybe than I will. And so for that reason, I hope that whatever ends up being the package, that we can all support that.
I have, oh, Counselor Avalos.
I guess I would pose to the group, maybe it would be helpful, it would be helpful for me to understand what are people's comfortability? Is that a word? I don't know if that is. On what level they would want to fund? And I would argue, I mean, also want to appreciate what everybody has said about supporting District 1. I think that really speaks to the important nature of having districts, but also understanding the shared impact on Portlanders and knowing that East Portland deserves more right now. So I appreciate that. I wonder if we could maybe separate those asks because I'm hearing, at least right now, that other districts aren't eager to go into talking about getting funding for district offices, but we like that District 1 could have that. So I would maybe ask that those be two separate things. So this is a little bit of process question, but my original question would be helpful if we could maybe, if I could get a sense of what people's thresholds are, also because then I could maybe propose another amendment.
See a number of hands going up. I also want to recognize that we are coming up on the time we had set aside for this in the agenda. We can blow through that, and that's okay. But if we all speak to every question, I think we're going to blow through that toward a long night. Counselor Avalos, does it make sense for what you're asking to separate out a few of the things that we've heard, which is one or two more staff each, district offices in District 1 versus all districts, some additional shared staff either within council operations to do our policy analyst work, council president's office, any other proposals around shared staff that folks have? And think about all of those separately? Is that what you're asking for?
Maybe not necessarily that they all be separate. I guess I was just trying to get a sense because it sounds like we want to move towards something, and it's maybe would need to be amended, unless everybody is supportive of the current $4 million, et cetera, amount. So, okay, I'm seeing some head nods. I just wanted to get a sense on if people were open to another proposal in cost. So, but I do think that the district office maybe could be a separate item. I don't think it needs to be separate from the other three that you mentioned.
Counselor, I see Counselor Zimmerman's hand up next.
I just want to answer directly. Right, I appreciate the question. So I support the package as it stands. And I've said it very clearly, I'll say it again clearly. I think that that number is important to go to each counselor, and that those folks are the ones who make decisions on those individual things, Counselor Avalos. So I wouldn't be in favor of breaking it out because I think that's on your responsibility and on my responsibility. So that's where I'm at. I'm at the full 4.3 or 5. And I think that the area that I feel like I'm giving up some compromise right now is on the, is on putting some council president-assigned staff, so it's not her personal staff, but it's the office's staff. I think that's incredibly important moving forward. But I recognize that maybe that would be a later action. And in this one, it's just for these and for the mayor's. So that's where I'm at. I support the full package currently.
Counselor Canal?
I support the full package as it's written right now as well. I do want to just know, I, I think District, my comments about District 1 going first are, I stick to all of them. District 2 does need a district office. I think that we should take a little time to get that scaled up and find a site and get that ready to go so that in our '25-'26 budget, we have the money for the ongoing expenses. And I think, I think it can wait that long. I don't know that I'd want to wait that long for D1. But I think the people, and, you know, this is maybe unique to District 2 and my interest here, and I've said publicly, I hope we have a district office for District 2 in historic Albina, which is both the geographic and cultural heart of District 2. And I also know that a lot of the folks who come worship, come play, come go to school, come hang out and visit their grandparents and their aunties and uncles in District 2 in Albina currently live in D1. And so I think that there is a connection there to this work. So I don't want to have it be misunderstood, that it's not a priority. I do prioritize it very highly. I think in terms of which budget cycle it ends up in is how I'm approaching D2. But I just wanted to clarify that. I do support the package as is.
Counselor Smith?
Madam President, I do support your package as is. And as probably the only grandmother here, it is so hard for me to, I'm touched by you all's support for District 1. I really am. But it's so hard for me to accept something that, a different package than everybody else. So I think that if we're going to take something, y'all, we need to take it together in what the president has put forward. And everybody, they figure out what they want to do with their own budgets. But I am so, I am so very touched by you all's understanding of what District 1 is. And let's see if we can take that vote.
Counselor Smith, is that a motion? Or should we continue taking comments?
No comments. I'm sorry, can't say no comments, but.
Then if that's the case, then I need you to make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to support your ordinance as is, as amended.
So I don't think we need, I don't want to interrupt, we don't need a motion because that's the ordinance that you have on the table. So I think.
We can just call the vote.
You can, maybe if you're wanting to get a, like, a sense of the council that that's the way they want to go and don't want to make other motions, that might be appropriate.
Well, I would want to make this motion, and let's see how this goes, and we may not need another motion.
If we don't need a motion.
There's a motion on the floor, and I call the question.
Point of information.
Hold on. You're calling the question on the resolution as amended?
Yes.
Okay. Let's take the point of information, and then we will continue discussion in the queue.
My understanding is that this is not currently an emergency ordinance? Do we need to add, can we vote on this without doing that?
So there are two things that, and again, step in if I'm overstepping right now. Two things that need to happen. Answer your question first. There is not an emergency clause one would need to be added. So yes. Two, the budget officer needs to amend an exhibit before you can take a vote on the ordinance as it stands. And we would need a short break to do that. So if the answer is there are no further amendments, we like the ordinance as it was amended to change to general contingency, we would go make those changes. We would show them on the screen, and then it would be appropriate. Do you want to make, add an emergency clause, I think is the question.
Let's do this. Rheta wants to get to a vote on what we have. We may need, we may have interest in an emergency clause. I'll point out that without that emergency clause, we come back and vote in two weeks. And then we have 30 days before implementation. So for anybody who is looking to hire staff before the next six weeks, we may want an emergency clause.
Sorry. Sorry, just on that. I think it's a budget ordinance, so it takes effect immediately, even if it's not on emergency.
Okay. Thank you. I see the attorneys, but it is a delay there. It is a delay there. What I would like to do, to get a sense of where we are at, since we need to take a break before we can actually vote, is to ask that if you are going to, if you were hoping to offer further amendment aside from an emergency clause, can you put yourself in the queue so that we can hear what the other proposals are? Let's get all of the proposals on the table. Let's figure out what we want to vote on, if we want to add an emergency clause, and then take a break so that we can actually have things on the screen to look at. Does that work for folks? Okay. Counselor Ryan?
I want to support this. And I'm not there yet in terms of how much we're asking for. So I was, I know I have to get to eventually putting out an amendment or new proposal. Okay. I liked when we were having a conversation about breaking this apart. I'm glad that we already voted on contingency. I think that an incremental step towards having more staffing to do constituent work out in the districts to allow District 1 to be first in the queue to move towards having a footprint in District 1, the one that is the biggest need at this moment. And then using the rest of this year to prepare us for the budget dialogue for '25-'26, where we actually talk about what we're experiencing and what kind of staffing we really do need. I think we're getting ahead of our skis a bit by asking for this big of an amount. So I'm struggling to get to a yes on the big picture proposal at the moment. I'm probably halfway there. Thanks. That wasn't, that wasn't a proposal.
That was not a proposal.
I'm still want to take up space to say that. I need to, I need to put this in.
You need to see something.
I support adding one additional staff for each council office and moving forward on the District 1 footprint for a council office in the district.
Do you have a position on the mayor's staff included in the current proposal? And do you have a position on the shared staff that has been discussed? Or are you leaving those out of your proposal?
I'm not in the mayor's office. I don't have the perspective. It sounds like I would say yes to that based on what you presented earlier. I don't have anything to say yet about the shared staffing because I haven't experienced it yet. So I don't have enough knowledge on the crosswalk of that.
I will tell you that our council operations has suggested that they could use one more policy analyst as we get started on our policy work.
For committee staffing and actually for council leadership, that would be you, the president and the vice president. I also want some shared staffing that would be shared with the two of you so that you can do your extra duties.
I know that our staff would appreciate that.
So. Hi, Lindley. And, do you want to translate what I tried to say?
I could use some translation because I've never seen where we asked for a bunch of amendments when we have a question called. So I'm quite.
I've never experienced a lot of what we're experiencing right now.
I was told that we do not need to call a question, but that we have to know exactly what we want before we can call the questions so that we can take a recess and have it written up. So I am trying right now, Counsel Zimmerman, to respond to what staff say they need and respond to the fact that I think I'm hearing some dissension across council, especially if we want an emergency clause, which would then require nine votes. And I am trying to feel out where we're at. So we could certainly recess right now, but I.
I just haven't heard anybody say, "I am moved to amend." So that's out there.
And that's what I've asked for, is if you are going to move to amend, to put yourself in the queue.
I moved to amend that we have an exhibit that gives us a dollar amount for adding one staff member per council office and to get District 1's office footprint in motion and hopefully be established soon. And also the mayor's three. And shared staffing for the council committees and one for the council leadership. So that probably totaled two. Is that the same exact exhibit as you asked for? It's not. It's much less, right? It's about half?
It's much less.
Sorry, can I just clarify the last part of what you just said? You want it, it's, is it two staff in council operations or three? I didn't quite track.
Yeah, I said two. One, one additional for the leadership and one additional for policy work.
Okay, got it.
For the committees staffing, which is shared.
Yeah. Got it.
I'd like to see that exhibit as we go forth after the break so I can compare.
So this is not a motion. This is a request for information from our budget team. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Avalos.
You want to make an amendment? Go for it. Counselor Avalos.
Oh, boy. Okay, I'm trying to respond to all the stimuli here. I... I guess what I'm feeling, I agree that the four-point whatever feels like too much right now. So I do agree with that. I don't know what amount I want. I think I'm looking at what the outcomes are. And the outcomes I want are definitely one other staff per person, definitely more staff for the council president operation, right? Including the policy analyst. It sounds like Counselor Ryan suggested two, but was your original proposal three, President Pertogony?
The original proposal was based on a number that gave folks some flexibility. Likely, it would have been three if you were looking at a district office immediately. If you were looking at having a smaller district office footprint and focus more on constituent outreach, it may have been a little bit more. This proposal came in at a restoration budget number.
Hold on. I think what I'm asking is, was three the number for president's staff in particular? Is that... Because I feel like what you're describing is like for each of the...
Got it. Got it. You were talking about president's staff. So I believe the conversation that a few folks had was one additional staff for our council operations policy team and two staff for the president or the leadership.
Okay. And then, you know, we don't... Because the original proposal was flexible funding essentially for each district so that they could decide about the district office. So I'm not clear like what that number is, but I would like to... I'm hearing from Commissioner Counselor Smith, 398,000 more for District 1? Or per... Per counselor for district offices?
For everything.
For everything?
Yes.
Okay, okay, okay. If Commissioner... If... I keep doing that. Why do I keep doing that? If Counselor Ryan is... Yours was technically not an amendment, right? So it was a request for information. Is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Correct.
We'll have another exhibit.
Okay. Maybe I will put myself back in the queue. I kind of want to hear what everyone else is thinking because I'm not quite sure yet and I'm trying to gauge the room here. But I think I'll tell you what my gut is telling me is that I would like to make that amount smaller. So I'm trying to figure out what that smaller amount is, but that... Those are my intentions right now. So I'll hold off and just kind of hear what everyone else has to say.
Counselor Mario.
Thank you. So I have a proposal, I guess, but I want... I would like to see... I don't know if there's a numbers person out here, a number city staffer that can whip this out real quick, but...
We're looking at you.
Okay, thank you. I would like to see the proposal stay pretty much the same with one major change. So one staff person... One additional staff person per city council member, one staffer for the council president because you're doing insane levels of work and you deserve support, two policy analysts that are shared amongst the city council, the three staffers that the mayor requested because I know you're here on Saturdays and you also deserve some assistance. And that for now, only District 1 get the funding for a council office. And the reason I say that is because I feel like we haven't done a clear analysis, or I have not seen one, where we actually see the cost of in-district offices when that comes to rent, to, you know, internet, phone, setting up the tech, setting up security for our safety. I haven't seen a meaningful analysis on those in-district office conversations yet. And I think that District 1 needs to be prioritized right now. And I think that the other districts aren't able to hold off until a little bit longer. We can wait to get that analysis. We... Most of our constituents are able to access City Hall by bus. District 1, you know, it takes an hour to get here. So I really want to prioritize that district for that need, but that's a suggestion that I have if... I think it's really important that we get additional staffers as soon as possible. So if the district offices are a place where we can cut that for now in order to advance getting staff, that is what I would propose. And I typed this out, so if I can email that to you, just let me know. I don't know what your full email is, but I'm happy to.
Counselor, I will send you... Or maybe the clerk can send you in Teams Ruth's email so you can send it to her.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I guess this is... I'm a little bit stuck with this process here because I, you know...
As am I.
We had a motion as presented in the agenda. We had an amendment to that motion, which we voted to accept. And then you would go back to the original... You'd go back to the original question, right? And I understand that there's some process here about the exhibits, but what we're stuck in now is now we're back in a world where we're bandying about proposals that's very... It's difficult to quantify because we're going based upon FTEs. Well, what's an FTE? Is it a senior council aide? Is it a, you know, junior constituent services? I would urge us to step back from that space, colleagues, and just go back to the numbers. If you don't like $4.5 million, give me a different number. I can vote on that. But that's... I don't think we can move forward in this conversation unless we can go back to just the aggregate dollars because then we can trust ourselves, I trust all of you, to make good fiscal choices with your dollars for the rest of the five months. That's where I'm at.
Ruth? Are you able to show us some numbers around district office costs and staffing costs? No? Okay, I'm seeing a no. So alternately, we can decide if we would like to put an emergency clause on this or not, take five minutes, vote on the original.
Or take the emergency clause off and just vote on the original.
Yes. Though we can't vote on the... We can't vote on the original today unless we put the emergency clause on.
That's...
Can't vote on...
Is that what you said? I thought she said the budget one goes live.
The budget one still needs the two weeks, but then doesn't have the 30-day wait period.
Correct. You still need two readings, but you don't... But it goes into effect immediately even without an emergency clause. So what... All I'm trying... I'm not trying to force a whole bunch of discussion. I'm just saying that before council votes on the... Before you vote on it, you would need to add an emergency clause. And to make it comply with budget law, you would need to amend an exhibit. That is all I'm saying.
Counselor Koyama Lane, you are in the queue and have not spoken.
Maybe this is not possible information, but what would be helpful for me, and I'm guessing other members of the public to see, is a breakdown in everyday language of what these different scenarios are, what they look like. It's hard... I don't... We don't have a slideshow. I don't have clear information that explains that is clear for me, what 4.5 million looks like. I am wondering what Counselor Ryan's scenario... How much would that be? What does that look like? Thank you.
Yeah. So if you give me a couple of minutes, I can make a few changes to the costing I have and I can get you some numbers and show you... Show you what that desire amendment looks like. I think without having done the costing, that what Counselor Mario and what Counselor Ryan said are very... Probably very close in number. And for the purposes of what you're doing today, you need a number. We do need to split out in when we go budget it, the difference between personnel and external materials and services. That's just for this fiscal year. You can change that obviously for July 1st. So I need to have some understanding of, you know, whether, like, you're looking at two staff or one staff per office, just because that affects the number for personnel. But other than that, I just... We need to get a rough number on the budget and, you know, then you all can decide how to use that. And then you have more time to figure out what you need for '25, '26. So that's... If you give me a couple of minutes, I can give you that.
Yeah, thank you. And just to clarify, I believe there definitely is a need here to have this conversation and talk about increasing our budget. And I just want to make sure we're proceeding really carefully and thoughtfully with this and not rushing into it.
We have a number of other folks in the queue. Ruth, I'd like you to be able to work on that. We are at almost nine o'clock and we have a number of other things on the agenda. So I am going to propose that we take a five-minute break, let folks stretch their legs, let Ruth get some numbers up for us.
I think we need to understand if we've passed an amendment yet.
We have passed an amendment.
Okay. What amendment did we pass, Madam President?
We passed an amendment to A1.
Right. So my question with that is a point of order of why would we be now tasking ideas that have come from this dais without an amendment to them to bring forward several proposals? As it stands, the last motion to call the question was from Counselor Green. On the package as it sits, we got direction from the budget office that they need to put together an exhibit, but then no other action has occurred.
We can't call the question today unless we put an emergency clause on, which is why I had originally opened it up to say, "Are there other amendments? Do folks need to talk through it? What do we want to do here?" So we're a little bit out of order at this point because there was a lot of discussion when I said if you have another amendment, put yourself in the queue. I think what I'm hearing you say is, "Let's just come back, get this all ready and move on with our business to vote on this in two weeks." Is that what you're hoping for?
I'm uninterested in seeing packages developed on the fly from the staff that have not been voted as amendments by this body. I think that we should take votes on amendments so that we can give clear direction to staff because I think we look like a shotgun blast right now to staff, and I don't think that's good, right? Because we scattered. So I would prefer that this body indicate what it is and isn't supporting and that that is the clear direction that we owe to staff for this product development.
So let's... I'm going to suggest something to that end. Alternately, from what I suggested before, we could go back to the proposal from Counselor Mario and say that we would be voting on an amendment which would be prepared by staff but which would be at the cost level of what she listed. Or would you prefer to put out a number?
Well, I would say that... I would say that this number was rooted in fact, right? It was... It is a restoration number to the council offices previously prorated with the remaining five months, given what has already been assigned. So these numbers didn't come out of nowhere. This is not a magic wand number. I think that those numbers already exist. They're rooted in the prorated data. And Counselor Mario, I agree with you. And some of us are like ready to go on certain spaces and others. And I think that, you know, I'm not one of them, but I agree with Commissioner Smith. If this council takes an action, I think we take it together so that each office has the same budget that doesn't place any other districts out of the ordinary with everyone else. I think it would be bad for us to be able to point to different districts in a way that makes them... I'm just not there yet. So that's why I'm going to support equal numbers across the board. That 4.3 that's out there is the equal number across the board. That's the one that was amended for out of contingency. And as far as I can tell, that's the only direction right now that staff has. And I think that's important, right? We should amend if we have amendments, but if we don't, the only one that should be given any product development is the one as it stands, I think.
We have a number of folks who would like to speak right now. Counselor Zimmerman, you are asking us not to speak, but...
No. Madam President?
Counselor Smith.
I agree with Counselor Zimmerman. I cannot accept taking a higher budget than everyone else. I just can't. We... We're 12 and we get the same budget. I disagree with Counselor Dan Ryan about giving the mayor three staffers in understanding that he needs three staffers, but not understanding that we need additional staffers to do all the committee work and then giving the president more staffers because she needs to do additional work. Well, that work also has to come from us in order for her to do the work. So the simpler thing to do would be to take the 398. If you can't use it all, give it back to the general fund. We could use it. We have a budget deficit. And let everyone get the same amount of money because if we don't, I won't even be able to accept my own amendment. It's just not going to be fair.
Do we have anybody who would like to make a motion for an emergency clause so we know if we're looking at a vote today or a vote in two weeks?
Yeah. I would like to make a motion. I would like to add an emergency clause recognizing that the city is facing multiple crises and an adequately staffed legislative branch is unable to meet those. And a two-week delay is unacceptable at this point.
Second. Our attorney has come.
Counselor Dunphy, may I suggest some emergency clause language?
Please do.
The precise language. Council declares that an emergency exists in order to have Exhibits 1 and 2 of this ordinance as amended be enacted upon passage of this ordinance. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the council.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, can you please call the roll for us?
Avalos.
I'm sorry. Counselor Ryan would like discussion. I apologize.
Yeah. So this is our second amendment. The first amendment was we moved it to contingency. I voted yes on that because no matter what, I thought that was a good idea. So now this one is that whatever we vote on tonight is going to be... Have an emergency clause on it. We don't know exactly what we're going to vote on yet. I don't because I would like to see the information from the exhibits.
I would just add that we are moving money from one side of a ledger to another from a contingency fund. We have five months to spend it. If we're unable to spend it in five months, we return it to the general fund. We're unable to carry it over into the next fiscal year. Each counselor is duly elected and has the authority to make their decisions on what they spend that money on. Whether or not we start construction or I hire folks immediately, this is a matter of simply increasing my office budget. And I think that there is an urgency to this.
I understand the case. I was trying to get at that some bolts of the actual amendments.
Yeah.
And so I understand the first amendment that I voted on. And this one is just to put an emergency clause, no matter what it is. Okay. Thanks.
Well, just tell us if we can vote on it today or not.
Further clarification. So this emergency ordinance applies to whatever we pass. So right now, we don't know what that is. Is that what I'm understanding?
That's correct because we don't know if we're passing something today or not unless we know if we have an emergency clause on it or not.
Okay.
Counselor Smith, are you in the queue or is that a legacy handle?
Legacy.
Okay. I see no more discussion.
Avalos.
I vote aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Canal?
Aye.
Ryan?
No.
Koyama Lane?
Aye.
Mario?
Aye.
Novick?
Although I'm still a no vote on the underlying issue as a courtesy, I'll vote yet aye on the emergency clause.
Clerk?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Pertogony?
Aye.
The amendment is approved.
Okay.
All right.
So we now have a little more clarity on our process.
More staff would help us with this.
What?
More staff would help us with this.
More staff would help us with this. Okay. Are the folks in the queue in the queue to discuss the resolution or in the queue to offer an amendment? Okay. Counselor Green.
I move to recess so a budget and exhibit can be prepared so that way we can call the question, take a vote.
Second.
Do we need a vote on this or can we just call a recess? I think I can just call a recess, right?
Without objection, yeah.
Is there any objection to a recess? We are going to take a five-minute recess. If our budget folks are not ready at that time, I am going to request permission to reorder the agenda so that we can hear from some of our other guests and let them go home. reorder the agenda so that we can hear from some of our other guests and let them go home. But let's take five minutes for everybody to stretch their legs. Thank you. I am going to call us back in, and I believe we have amendment language shared on our screens. I'm hoping we can get it up on the screen so that everybody else can see it, too. So this is what we are currently, this is what we have currently voted into our proposal. As I understand it, we need to vote on amendments to the exhibits to match the language of the resolution now. This is what the attorney has told me. But I see a disagreement here between the...
I don't believe the initial amendment included the language and conformed Exhibit 1, and that's the problem with it.
Okay.
So we just have a conformed Exhibit 1, a quick motion, second vote on Exhibit 1, but I think Kealan can show that as well, so that people can see it.
Okay, let's get reformed Exhibit 1 up. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay. We're going to get that up so you can actually see it, and as soon as it's up, we will take a vote on this. If I talk really slowly, I might stall for long enough. There we go. It's up for counselors. Roll down. So this is an amended Exhibit 1, which we now have a motion and a second to adopt, which would ensure that our Exhibit 1 lines up with what is in the language of the resolution. Any discussion? Okay, Kealan, do we need to do a roll call on this?
Yes. Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kinnell.
Aye.
Ryan.
I'm not used to this. Sorry, I'm just not used to this. This feels very... So this is the original that was proposed, and it was just moved to contingency. Okay.
Correct.
All right. And the Exhibit 2 that I was trying to get to, is that going, do you have data on that? Do you have the information on that?
Right now, we are...
But we're just voting on this one?
Correct.
I wanted to see what the difference was. I don't have enough information to vote aye, so no.
Koyama Lane.
Aye.
Murillo.
Aye.
Novick.
I apologize. I think I'm a little confused. Are we just voting whether we change the exhibit?
Correct, to match the language of our...
Oh, yeah.
Yes, we are voting to accept the exhibit that will then conform with the language of the amended resolution.
Aye.
Clerk.
Aye.
Green.
I would like to revote.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Peralguini.
Aye, and I would like to offer Counselor Ryan the opportunity to change his vote if that is...
Yeah, now that I know we're just accepting the exhibit, aye.
Motion passes. Do we now have a fully conforming resolution on which we could take motions or amendments?
We have a complete ordinance which is eligible for a vote today because it contains an emergency clause.
Okay, and because it has an emergency clause, I believe that means that the question before us right now is the resolution itself. Is that correct?
Correct, as amended.
Is there any discussion? I don't see anybody in the queue. Do we need a motion, or because this is before us, can we just take the vote? Kealan, could you please call roll? We are now voting on the amended resolution, which is now fully conforming, which has the original dollar amount increase per office, the original dollar amount increase for the mayor, no additional shared staff, and we have moved the A1 where the funds are coming from to the contingency and added an emergency clause. That is what this vote is on.
Avalos.
I just want to say thank you to my colleagues. The thing that had, that I had the most pause about was where the money was coming from, so moving it to contingency really helped change my views on this, in addition to feeling compelled by the arguments and agreeing that also we can have this money, everyone can spend it as they need. If you don't spend it, it'll go back into the pot. There isn't that much left in the budget cycle, so it's not really impacting too many of the areas that I was originally worried about. So with that, I vote aye.
Dunphy.
Thank you, colleagues. Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Kinnell.
Aye.
Ryan.
I want to acknowledge first of all that the arguments made for additional staffing are all in agreement for, and I am, continue to have some indigestion with how big of a leap we're taking here, and I feel too rushed to vote yes on this, and so I respectfully vote no.
Koyama Lane.
Aye.
Murillo.
I also was a little bit stressed out about the size of the budget and how quickly we're moving, but after discussing all of this with my colleagues and hearing the proposals, I feel very confident in this and that it's not going to harm some of the areas that I was originally worried about as well, so I vote aye.
Novick.
I really appreciate the quality of the discussion we've had tonight. I also want to take this opportunity to congratulate President Peralguini on inventing the phrase "legacy hand." Nay.
Clerk.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Peralguini.
Aye. Is that 10 votes?
Yes.
Motion passes. I believe that moves us to Item 7. Item 7 is an internal item. Counselors, Items 8 and 9 have guests who have been with us for a long time. Without objection, could we move Item 7?
Aye.
Down the agenda, please, to let our guests speak.
So moved.
Yes.
Any objections? Kealan, could we please move on to Item 8 on the agenda?
Acknowledge the birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.
Counselors Avalos and Smith. Counselor Avalos, I believe you're kicking us off. Counselor Smith? Okay, Counselor Smith.
Yes, I'm trying to get up to speed to where you are. It is a great pleasure to be able to bring this resolution forward today and to be able to talk about Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The purpose of this resolution is to articulate the significance of acknowledging Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and the multifaceted effects this recognition has on the city of Portland, particularly for its black residents and the broader community. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is a seminal figure in American history whose advocacy for civil rights, social justice, and equality has inspired countless individuals and movements across the globe. Dr. King's legacy is particularly resonant in Portland, Oregon, where the black community continues to face systemic challenges that he sought to address through his work. And the anticipated outcomes from this resolution is community engagement. By recognizing Dr. King's birthday, the city of Portland fosters great community engagement, encouraging residents to participate in discussions, events, and activities that celebrate his legacy. This engagement serves as a catalyst for building relationships and fostering a sense of community among diverse groups. Education and awareness. The resolution will promote educational efforts that inform residents about the history of the civil rights movement and Dr. King's role within it. Increased awareness will enhance understanding of the ongoing issues of racial inequality. And in terms of advocacy and racial equity, acknowledging Dr. King's contributions, it highlights the city's commitment to confronting systemic racism and inequity. It also encourages local leaders, organizations, and community members to advocate for policies and initiatives that aim to dismantle barriers faced by marginalized communities aligning with Dr. King's vision of just, of a just society. And the acknowledgement of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday is not merely ceremonial, but a vital step towards fostering a more inclusive, equitable, and just city. By honoring his legacy, Portland affirms its dedication to social justice. It engages its community in meaningful discussions and inspires collective action to address ongoing challenges. This resolution aims to empower residents, especially the black community, and reaffirm their rightful place in city governance and civic life. It has been such a great honor to sponsor this resolution with my District 1 City Counselor, Candace Avalos, and now she will give her comments about Dr. King.
Thank you so much. Also an honor to not only be here on this resolution, but to serve with you, Commissioner. I keep doing that. Counselor Smith. I'm literally the one who on charter was like, it should be called Counselors, and I keep doing that. All right, so, good evening, everybody. Thanks for hanging tight with us, and I also have a few remarks because this is an important...
Thanks for hanging tight with us, and I also have a few remarks because this is an important moment to recognize Dr. King's legacy. So we're coming together to honor the life and legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. as a leader whose courage and vision forever changed the course of history. But here in Portland, as we celebrate his birthday, we must also confront the ways that his dream remains unfinished in our own city. Dr. King challenged us to envision a beloved community, a society where justice prevails, poverty is eradicated, and people of all backgrounds can thrive together. Yet, as we look around Portland, we see stark reminders of how far we still have to go. From the ongoing housing crisis that disproportionately impacts Black and Brown communities, to the systemic racial disparities in education, healthcare, and public safety, we know there is urgent work to be done. This resolution, as Counselor Smith has mentioned, is not just a symbolic act, it is a call to action. Honoring Dr. King means addressing the legacy of redlining that has displaced generations of Portlanders of color, particularly in Districts 1 and 2. It means confronting racial inequities in our criminal justice system and investing in alternatives to policing that center community's safety and restorative justice. It means ensuring that every child in our city has access to quality education and no family has to choose between paying rent and putting food on the table. These are the principles that Dr. King passionately advocated for, that many of us on our council also advocate for. Dr. King reminded us that progress is neither automatic nor inevitable. It requires sustained effort, accountability, and the courage to make difficult choices in the pursuit of justice. So as we pass this resolution today, I invite us to think about what it means to build a beloved community here in Portland, committing to lifting up the voices of those most impacted by injustice, centering equity in every decision that we make as leaders here on this dais, and committing to the long and very unglamorous work of systemic change, not just today, but every day. Let this also serve as a reminder that Dr. King's dream is not a distant ideal, it is actually a roadmap for the future of our city, a future where Portland lives up to its promise as a place of opportunity, inclusion, and hope for all who call it home. With that, I know we have some guests here to offer some other remarks. Were you going to invite your guests first?
I think, yes, I think Dr. Haynes is on the line.
Great.
Dr. Leroy Haynes.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Dr. Haynes, you have a few minutes.
Yes. My name is Reverend Dr. Leroy Haynes Jr., president of the Albina Ministerial Alliance, chairperson of the MA Coalition for Justice and Police Reform. I'm deeply thankful for the Madam President, the counselor, for bringing this item up on the actual, the natural birthday of Dr. Martin Luther King. And this is very personal to me, as having served as a youth organizer in the Southern Christian Leadership Conference under Dr. King at the age of 13, and then later under Congressman John Lewis in the Student Non-Albino Coordinating Committee. I just want to thank a slight, in these couple of minutes, the historical context. And I think sometimes we forget that, as the Colonel reports said following the WASRAS, that we had two societies here in America, one Black and one White, that was growing further and further apart. It was out of this context that the modern-day civil rights movement, that some historians call the Second American Nonviolent Revolution, took place with the '55 Montgomery Busbar Code, in '63 the March on Washington, 1964 the Public Accommodation, '65 the Voting Rights Bill, 1968 the Fair Housing Bill, and the Poor People March. It is out of this struggle for freedom, justice, and equality that we have made progress in our society today. One of the greatest contributions of Dr. King was the nonviolent social revolution in the 20th century that broke down the walls of American apartheid, segregation, what we called in the South Jim Crow. He was a moral conscience of the nation when it came into guiding and directing the nation. He was a catalyst for the contemporary movement, the contemporary women movement, the contemporary LGBTQ movement, the contemporary indigenous Native Indian movement, and owned and owned throughout the nation. And thirdly, I want to say, he gave us the vision of the beloved community, a community that is inclusive of all people working together as equal to create a just society. And lastly, I want to say, one of the last books that Dr. King wrote is "Where Do We Go From Here: Chaos, Our Community." It is ironic that we still grapple with that question, and I believe we in Portland must choose community over chaos. And this is one of the reasons why we have the police reform effort that's taken place, the Independent Oversight Committee, and so many other issues that have evolved out of this movement towards, to create a more perfect union. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Leroy Haynes.
Yes, thank you so much, Dr. Haynes. And now I would like to invite Jeff Selby, interim director of the Office of Equity and Human Rights, to give some remarks about how the city upholds civil rights within the organization. So Director Selby, thanks for hanging in and for being here.
Thank you, Counselor. Good evening, community members. Madam President, Madam Vice President, City Councilors, Mr. Mayor, City Administrator, and colleagues. For the record, my name is Jeff Selby, my pronouns are he/him, and I am the interim director of your Office of Equity and Human Rights. It is an honor to be here on this day, the 96th anniversary of the birth of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. I think it's still the 15th? Yes, okay. We stand on the shoulders of Dr. King and so many others who led the civil rights movement. We cannot let all that blood and sweat and all those tears to be shed in vain as we continue our fight for justice as the city government on behalf of the people we serve. The Office of Equity and Human Rights sets the equity vision and goals for the city of Portland, and programs in our office were created to specifically reinforce and uphold the civil rights of all Portlanders and to ensure the city complies with our obligations under the Civil Rights Act. My team's approach and framework have allowed the city to make great strides in racial equity, civil rights, language access, and Americans with Disabilities Act compliance, which is woven throughout major citywide planning efforts. And our equity team has provided guidance and counseling and developed myriad tools intended to guide and support equitable and nondiscriminatory planning, decision-making, investment, programming, and service delivery. With civil rights, language access, and accessibility in mind, we continue to implement standards and build robust civil rights data tools, equity analysis, and other resources to strengthen our community engagement practices and support community-centered decision-making. The Office of Equity has institutionalized much of this work and everyday policy work, and equity practitioners and equity managers throughout the city have helped move much of this work forward in their bureaus and service areas. From the Portland Plan to a cohesive equity approach to the city's COVID-19 response, to equitable strategic planning, we have made a lot of progress, but we still have so much work to do. Our new government structure allows for a more unified equity approach across the enterprise, and we are excited to guide the work in a more collaborative and organized structure. From a national standpoint, the next four years will undoubtedly test our city's resolve for civil rights, equity, and accessibility. We, as a government, must set the example. Equity and civil rights are not just about laws and compliance, they are tenets of good, ethical, and moral governance, remembering that we serve all Portlanders while centering systemically excluded and institutionally oppressed community members. Above all, tonight is a celebration of community and their resilience. This resolution not only honors the work of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and those who fought for civil rights over the past 60 years, but also of the ongoing work of people all across the country, our region, and our city, including the tenacious work of Dr. Haynes and the Albina Ministerial Alliance. On behalf of my incredible, passionate team at the Office of Equity and Human Rights, and also on behalf of community, I thank Councilors Smith and Avalos for bringing this resolution to council, and to all of you for honoring Dr. King this evening. We must continue to lead with racial equity and combat anti-blackness. We appreciate your continuing support of civil rights, equity, and anti-racism work at the city of Portland. Thank you.
Thank you to both of our guests. I believe we have public testimony signed up?
We have one person signed up, Madam President, Chris Copeland. Chris Copeland? I see you now, sorry, Bridge Crane. We also have Bridge Crane-Sinka Johnson signed up.
Right ahead.
Hopefully, next year will be different. When I come here and I think about the people who testified with me and before me and around me, it will have been a more diverse collection of faces. People in the Columbia Heights neighborhood, people out in the East County, even though they hopefully have a local office, we'll see people have more faith in government and believe that it's worth their time to engage with you because real change is going to come. It's been a long time since I've had the privilege of being in this room with the Reverend Dr. Lee Rohans Jr., and to think back to 1929, when Dr. King was born, 96 years ago, as we were good enough to recall and mention. And, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of different activities that are going to happen through a whole spectrum of people. I think that's one thing that Dr. King would want us to be mindful of, is that even though we have, not ethnic blocks or racial blocks, but inside each of those communities is a huge range of diversity. We've seen some of it in this council. At one time, Joanne Hardisty and Loretta Smith were contending for a seat. Teresa Raeford has been a candidate for mayor. There will still be a community action plan event on the legal holiday, the Monday, where people can march from Peninsula Park down to the MLK statue. And normally I don't wear a yarmulke, but I'm a little bit disappointed that this, right here, right now, didn't have a better intersection with communities of faith. We know that in the '60s, more so than in the '70s, other faith communities that weren't part of the historic Black church did a better job of partnering against anti-blackness. And hopefully, under this current incoming presidential regime, we'll see a resurgence where whether people are secular or people of faith, we will unite to, once again, you know, I'm glad that Mr. Selby, who I've known from a time when this city used to have an active human rights commission that met in the Commonwealth Building. I don't know exactly how that faded out. Certainly, when we think about the human rights situation, at different times in the last eight years, there's been a need for the city to have a better game, for lack of a better word, to make sure that marginalized and diverse communities are respected and protected, and that they get from this government the public safety and social safety net things they deserve, until we address one big problem that we don't talk about enough, and that is income disparity that is a result of historic discrimination, Black people being blocked from building wealth during the times of redlining and other practices that maybe continue right up to this day. So as we talk about Black history, I don't know if I have 30 seconds more or not...
No, Bridge Crane, you have five seconds. Our timer's not...
Thank you. Of course, Black history goes back at least to 1803, when York was here. I don't think the highest of the persons who donated for the 1803fund.com, but let's help that work proceed also. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That completes testimony.
Thank you. Council discussion. Counselor Koyamalane.
I just wanted to thank Mr. Selby for being here and for the work that your team does in the city's Office of Equity and Human Rights. I know that you guys are working hard every day. I also know that your team has prepared some equity trainings for us as councilors that have been bumped two times, and so I want to acknowledge how important this work is. We see that, and we will make sure to do those trainings soon.
Any other discussion? Okay, Kealan, could you call the roll, please?
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Canal.
I'm going to say something, but I'll keep it brief for time. I just wanted to say thank you for introducing this, Counselor Smith and Avalos. Thank you to our testifiers and guests, especially Dr. Leroy Haynes, whose wisdom has been of great value to me personally in several spaces over the last few years. Briefly, District 2, which I have the privilege of representing, is the home of Vancouver Avenue Baptist Church, where Dr. King came and spoke when he visited Portland in November 1961. And while here, Dr. King spoke of the necessity of all of us to, quote, "rise above the narrow confines of their individualistic concerns to the broader concerns of all humanity." And one thing I've always been inspired by how, about him, is by how he fought for civil rights specifically for Black Americans, but held the door open for everyone else who is being marginalized in society. Heard about the Fair Housing Bill, the Poor People's Campaign, and these helped everyone. To give a personal example, without Dr. King and without the Civil Rights Movement, there's no Immigration Act of 1965. Without that act, families like mine would never have been Americans. So we must all heed that example of Dr. King and his contemporaries and strive to not only open doors for ourselves and our communities, but keep them open behind us or addressing the broader concerns of all humanity. I'm proud to vote yes.
Ryan.
Yeah, I just want to start off by thanking Counselor Smith and Counselor Avalos. It means a lot that you brought this, but also you're living the dream, and so you're here representing that dream. I just wanted to say a couple of things, because some of my earliest memories are tied to the assassination of MLK. It sparked protest here in Portland, and I was curious about such things, even as a kindergarten kid. My mom loved MLK, and she was also sad about it, so I'd always ask her questions. It was at a time where there were other violent assassinations, JFK, Bobby Kennedy, Malcolm X, just a few years prior to MLK, and she just tried to do the best she could to help me comprehend why there would be violence for those that were speaking to justice and from love. These roots have made MLK Day a big deal for me, as I track the day slowly evolving into a national holiday that actually had participation. And it's a holiday of inclusion, inspiration, and action, and I celebrate in churches, like many people, each year, and experience this holiday as a spiritual holiday rooted in love to help each person live to their fullest potential. Thanks. Oh, aye.
Koyamalane.
Especially as we move toward this weekend this year and Mondays. Oh, I thought you said Ilana, I'm sorry. It was like, this seems out of order, but okay.
Thank you, Councilors Avalos and Smith, for bringing this resolution forward together. I appreciate you both, and I am proud to say aye, and I'm proud to serve alongside you both.
Mario.
Thank you both for bringing this resolution forward. It's really a special thing, and I'll keep my comments brief, but I think something that I always think about when I think about Martin Luther King Jr. is how our history has really sanitized his legacy, and the fact that there really was a mandate to address poverty as an anti-racism issue, and that we in the city of Portland are facing with historic levels of income inequality and in this country as well, and that we have to do right by our residents and take bold steps to address that. And I hope that we won't just sanitize his legacy, but actually really lean into what it means to serve the people in the way that he would have wanted. but actually really lean into what it means to serve the people in the way that he would have wanted. I vote aye. Thank you very much for doing this.
Novick.
Thank you, Counselor Avalos, Counselor Smith, Dr. Haynes, Director Selby. I want to take this opportunity to recommend to everybody, if you haven't read it already, Taylor Branch's three-part history of King and the Civil Rights Movement. It's the, it's really engrossing. It lets you know what a great political leader Dr. King was and how he had to manage this discordant coalition of various organizations and voices. And it's the fastest 2,912-page read you've ever read. I also just wanted to say that I was delighted listening to the eulogies for Jimmy Carter to hear the voice of Andrew Young, one of Dr. King's close allies. I didn't know that he was still alive, and it was wonderful to hear him still alive and brilliant and wonderful. Thank you. Aye.
Clark.
Thank you, Counselors Avalos and Smith. I really appreciate you bringing this forward. And I think I'm safe in saying that we're all here for the beloved community, and we have a lot of work to do. Aye.
Green.
Thank you to Counselors Avalos and Smith for bringing this forward. It's urgent. It's not just symbolic. We are about to select committees that is going to guide our work, that's going to have long-lasting implications. And so I see this resolution as an invitation to remember that whether we're talking about arts and economy, whether we're talking about labor and workforce development, infrastructure, if it's not in the budget, it ain't happening. All right.
Hammerman.
Thanks to you both. I appreciate it greatly. Two great colleagues who, one I'm getting to learn, and I'm looking forward to it. One who I've been with too way too long, Counselor Smith. But this is an important and meaningful aye vote for me because for 15 years I have sat out there and watched you bring these in different places. And this is the first time I get to vote aye with you, and I'm so proud to do it. So thanks for bringing this. Aye.
Purtel Guinea.
Thank you both for bringing this forward. And thank you to our invited guests for being here with us tonight, especially this year as we move toward this weekend, toward Monday's inauguration. It is so important that we not only honor Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with our words, but also with our decisions, with our actions, and that we lift each other up, that we lift our whole community up. I am honored to vote aye.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. I believe we are moving on to item nine on our agenda.
Accept the 2023-24 Parks Levy Annual Report and Parks Levy Oversight Committee Annual Report.
And I believe our guests have offered us the great gift of time and may be cutting down the presentation slightly. Is that correct?
If it pleases the council, we were going to do a presentation of the Parks Levy Report as well as the Parks Levy Oversight Committee's report. We can, if you would like, not do the staff portion and just let our community member and oversight committee member present her report. You've all received hard copies and electronic copies of the report. So if you have any questions about the Levy Report, we're happy to answer anything. Or we can just do a truncated version of the entire presentation.
Counselors, any objection to moving forward with the Oversight Board report? And we have the hard copy of the annual report, which we can ask questions about? Okay.
But, Madam President, I would actually like to hear a truncated version of the staff report.
Okay. Director Long, you have your direction. We'll see how truncated we can be.
Great. I believe Mayor had some opening remarks, or would you like me to just get to it? All right. For the record, my name is Adina Long. I'm the Director of Portland Parks and Recreation. I want to thank the council for having us this evening. Excited to share that year three of the Parks Levy has been, has seen progress on all of the commitments made to Portland voters in the voter pamphlet. The report materials presented today cover key actions, finances, and performance measures from July 2023 through June 2024. I'm looking forward to our work session tomorrow morning to share additional information about Portland Parks and Recreation. I want to thank our staff who played a critical role in delivering programs and services. Their work cleaning and maintaining parks every day, operating summer camps and events, and working with community partners have been essential to the successful implementation of the Parks Levy. I want to thank the members of the Parks Levy Oversight Committee for your work this past year ensuring that Parks Levy resources are spent meeting voter commitments in a fiscally accountable and transparent way. Thank you to the current members Alicia Blakely, Zay Conant, Mary Rubel, Silas Sanderson, and Tim Williams, and to Casey Mills for serving as a Parks Board liaison to the committee. I'm so grateful for their service. I'm going to turn it over to Claire Flynn, our Parks Levy Coordinator, who will present an overview of the fiscal year 22, 23, 24 Parks Levy Annual Report. After Claire's presentation, Mary Rubel, a member of the Parks Levy Oversight Committee, will present the Oversight Committee's annual report.
Thank you, Director Long. Good evening. My name is Claire Flynn, and I'm the Parks Levy Coordinator within vibrant communities. Next slide. Approved by Portland voters in November 2020, the Parks Local Option Levy, or Parks Levy, is a property tax of 80 cents per $1,000 of assessed value that will raise approximately $45 million per year for five years, having started in fall of 2021. We are currently in year four of five of the Parks Levy, and the current levy will go through fiscal year 25, 26 as a last year. Next slide. This report being presented today, as Director Long said, is for the prior full fiscal year, which is fiscal year 23, 24, year three of the Parks Levy. Next slide. The report shares key actions, financials, and performance measures for the 15 commitments included in the Parks Levy ballot title and explanatory statement. Each of the commitments is nested into one of three larger categories: Recreation for All, Protect and Grow Nature, and Community Partnerships. Performance measures are also included to show impact of the Parks Levy year over year. As an operating levy, the Parks Levy is spent through a leveraged funding model in which general fund is blended with Parks Levy funding, so Parks Levy dollars support a portion of all eligible operational expenses. Throughout the report and on these slides, we include interviews and stories of staff, partners, and participants to show the impact of the Parks Levy. Next slide. Recreation for All means increasing access to recreation by reducing cost as a barrier, ensuring service continuity, and centering programming and outreach on underserved communities. Next slide. Thanks to the Parks Levy, we were successful in preventing cuts and closures to recreation programs and facilities. Examples include the return of the Matt Dishman Block Party and how the Bureau adapted to continue providing programming during the closure of Mount Scott Community Center. Next slide. We used Parks Levy funding to deliver a variety of recreational programs, including swim lessons, camps and classes, fitness in the park, pop-up concerts, free lunch and play, and other popular programming. In year three, the Bureau piloted the Schools to Pools Initiative, partnering with public schools to offer swim lessons to second-grade students, as well as continued to refine and adjust swim lesson formats. With the Parks Levy, we've also enhanced free lunch and play. In year three, free lunch and play served over 58,000 meals, up 37% from the previous year, and part of the total nearly 118,000 free meals served by PP&amp;R in year three. Next slide. Two main elements of removing financial barriers to PP&amp;R programming are the access discount and free programming. The access discount allowed the Bureau to provide over $4 million in financial assistance to nearly 18,000 users, which was 26% of all participants. Our team is also currently working with Portland State University on a community needs survey to help the Bureau understand if the efforts we've implemented, like the access discount, are affecting the perception of cost as a barrier and financial access. We anticipate those results back in February. We also showcase the success of free programming, like the East Portland Summer Arts Festival. Next slide. Protect and Grow Nature means making parks and facilities cleaner, better maintained, safer, and more welcoming for all. Next slide. These two commitments are focused on natural features and natural areas and the benefits they provide. In this section, we highlighted the work of the Protect the Best team and how the urban forestry team creatively worked to provide downed trees for use in salmon habitat and environmental restoration. Next slide. In fiscal year 23, 24, over 6,600 people participated in environmental education programming. These programs are critical to connecting youth to nature and fostering a sense of stewardship in Portland communities. The environmental education team has expanded transportation options with the Parks Levy to ensure that all participants can access programming and site locations. Forest Park has partnered with local organizations to connect people to nature. Next slide. A large portion of the Parks Levy spending this year was on park maintenance and cleaning. Aside from continued general park maintenance, including emptying trashcans, cleaning and checking restrooms, preventative maintenance and repair, and more, Parks Levy support and added positions were critical in maintaining safe facilities and parks following the January 2024 storm. Next slide. The newly published Park Tree Maintenance Plan and the Engagement for the Portland Urban Forest Plan are helping create stronger protection of Portland trees. In year three, we planted more trees in the air prior with a higher percentage in priority service areas. Protections for Portland's park trees have also improved. Proactive park and natural area tree maintenance is a service that would not be possible without the Parks Levy. Next slide. For modernizing data systems, we detailed how we are now using Microsoft Access as a database to track performance measured data. Urban Forestry also now has the first-ever software to manage and track trees as assets. And we have a new developed parks peer review process to better evaluate and track park condition. Next slide. Community partnerships are critical to centering the community in decision-making and oversight and to deliver an equitable parks and recreation system for all Portlanders. Next slide. The Parks Levy Oversight Committee continued to review and advise on fiscal accountability, adherence to ballot language, and transparency. In a moment, we'll hear from Mary Rubel to present the committee's annual report. Next slide. This commitment also includes completing an independent performance audit. In year three, PP&amp;R contracted with Schoberg-Evisant Consulting to complete a performance audit. And the final report states that Parks Levy funds were used in compliance with voter-approved commitments, and dollars were clearly tracked using strong financial systems. Next slide. In year three, the Community Partnership Program continued to support delivering services through partnership, granting funds to additional partner agencies, and serving over 6,600 youth. The Parks Levy is also supporting the Interstate Firehouse Cultural Center feasibility study to help create a vibrant black arts and culture ecosystem. Next slide. In year three, the Bureau successfully delivered parks and recreation services to a wide variety of users and implemented initiatives such as English as a learning language, teen force, partnerships with organizations serving communities of color, and more. With the Parks Levy, the access discount is helping more people, including older adults in lifelong recreation programs, participate in programming with reduced-cost options. Recreation also continues to adapt and expand culturally-specific and language-specific programming. Next slide. This is a high-level summary of Parks Levy spending in fiscal year 23, 24. The Bureau uses service area codes to charge expenses, and each of those service areas have been evaluated and sorted based on whether they were directly contributing towards meeting one or more Parks Levy commitments. The total net expense is the total expenditures minus any program revenue. And the Parks Levy portion of expense is the amount of that total expense that was funded by the Parks Levy using the leveraged funding model. Per City Council direction in the ballot referral, the Parks Levy was required to reimburse the Portland Children's Levy for compression impact. And so with that, the total amount of Parks funding spent in year three was $51.22 million. This Parks Levy spending in fiscal year 23, 24 is pretty close to the exact amount that came in from tax revenues. After the year-end spending and balancing of a year-end buffer, the Parks Levy fund balance will increase by $2.66 million. And this is added to the remaining balance from years one and two to be spent in future years. We do expect that in years four and five, our Parks Levy expenditures will outweigh the revenue that comes in from taxes. So that remaining balance will be needed to fill the gap. At this time, we anticipate ending the five-year levy with the revenues from that five-year period being fully expended to deliver services to Portlanders. Next slide. I'm going to turn over to Mary Rubel now to present the Parks Levy Oversight Committee Annual Report.
Thank you, Claire, and thank you, Adina. And thank you to the City Council and the Mayor for having us. I'm Mary Rubel. I'm a member of the Parks Levy Oversight Committee. I'm here today to share the committee's third report with you, a response to fiscal year 23, 24 Annual Report and the parks and recreation actions in this fiscal year. While we celebrate the success of year three, which has been very successful, we are well aware that the Parks Bureau is heavily reliant on the current levy for basic operating funds. In years three and four, it is funding approximately 40% of the Bureau's operating budget. I'd like to underline that because in year five, it could be as high as 50%. We are well aware of the enormous backlog of maintenance to parks and recreation facilities, trails, and parklands. The $600 million backlog must be addressed in order to maintain a parks and recreation system that is welcoming, safe, and sustainable. Parks and recreation services are critical to the fabric of our community and to the livability and resurgence of the City of Portland. We want to encourage City Council to keep the reality of how the Bureau is funded and has been funded over many years in mind. The Bureau relies heavily upon both general fund dollars and special levies and bonds. But special levies and bonds will not fund the whole Parks Bureau. And we need to ensure that you have the Parks Bureau remain viable as we go forward. General fund dollars are critical to the future of the Bureau. We are a committee of five members, as Adina said, and we meet quarterly. Our role is to review information and verify general compliance with and progress toward the Parks Levy. Both the purpose of the Parks Levy, we also advise on transparency and communication strategies. And it is our responsibility to report to you in this annual report. And the members of our committee represent a broad swath of Portland. So we feel very good about the focus of the committee across the city. Fiscal accountability is one of the key areas of our focus.
Next slide.
Oh, next slide. Thank you. Our report is structured in three main sections, the first being fiscal accountability. Through the annual report and Oversight Committee meetings, Parks was transparent and accountable in tracking and communicating the use of Parks Levy dollars. We particularly valued the Bureau's proactive communication with the committee about revenue forecast changes and how underspending will be balanced across the five-year levy timeframe. After the publishing of this report, the committee was also pleased to receive the Parks Levy independent audit. This review validates the auditability of the Parks Levy expenses and provides additional transparency about fiscal accountability. We recommend continuing to proactively share financial status with the committee as projections change and that the Bureau continue to disseminate the independent audit findings. We are pleased that the audit in full is posted online. Next slide. The committee found that Parks actions in year three are based on and build upon the promises contained in the language of the voter's pamphlet. We encourage Parks to continue to expand and refine performance measures related to the 15 commitments and include comparisons to past performance to establish and provide quantification on what progress in each commitment looks like for the Bureau. We also look forward to receiving the community needs survey results this year to understand how programs and initiatives are serving Portlanders and can be further refined. Finally, the key element of adhering to the budget language is delivering programming and fostering partnerships in PP&amp;R spaces. This is happening. The quality and condition of PP&amp;R facilities are critical. The Oversight Committee urges the city to prioritize funding to address the nearly $600 million maintenance backlog. Next slide. In terms of transparency, Parks has been responsive to the interests of our group, creating time and meeting agendas for topical presentations that we have selected and has shared information publicly. We also appreciate that Parks Levy information is shared in translated and accessible formats. We encourage the Bureau to share short-form visually-focused materials to demonstrate the Parks Levy impact. To maximize public trust in the To maximize public trust in the stewardship of the Parks Levy, as well as communicate the critical nature of this funding source, we encourage city leaders to collaborate with Parks in understanding and planning the financial picture of Portland's parks and recreation system. I want to thank City Council for your continued support of the Parks Levy and look forward to future years of success. With that, I'll turn it back to Claire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We're excited about the progress made in year three of the Parks Levy and are grateful to the support of the Oversight Committee. That concludes our presentation, so we will open it up to questions and discussion.
Thank you, and thank you especially, Ms. Rubel, for staying so late with us. This is time for questions. Counselor Dunphy?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions about the access discount program, and I may not be, I might be too tired to ask it appropriately, and I may not be smart enough to know the answer. But my understanding is through Parks, we don't operate at a cost-recovery model right now for the cost of a swim lesson, a dance class, a cooking class. We don't operate at a cost-recovery model. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So when we're using these dollars to supplement and to provide discount, first, do we have a clear sense of where in the city those dollars are being, or where that access is being used? And then my second question is, the kind of confusing part for me is, if we're already not operating at a cost-recovery model for those costs, and we then further reduce that, how do we account for that in the accounting of the Bureau? Meaning that, you know, if we gave a $5 discount for a class that costs $7 out of actual pocket, are we using that simply to just transfer it over to supplement general fund for staffing? Are we using those dollars to, I mean, is it funny accounting? I just, I don't know how to ask the question accurately.
Good evening, councilors. Thank you very much for having me. I'm Sarah Huggins. I'm with Vibrant Communities as well. So I will take a crack at these, and we're also happy to follow up with sort of more specificity. So we have been analyzing the utilization of the access discount pass. We have a sense both of where it's being utilized, and we are asking people to voluntarily share some demographic information so we can also have an understanding of who it's being used by as well. So we're happy to follow up with sort of more detail around sort of the utilization that we've seen so far. In terms of how it's budgeted, each year, we've put a forecasted amount for what we think it will be. It is certainly not operating on a cost-recovery model, and so far, we've been able to grow into that and absorb that within our planned budget.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, but I'm thinking tomorrow, we have a work session with Parks. Is that right?
We will be back with Parks in 11 and 1/2 hours.
So I can hold my questions until then.
If you have anything specific that we need Ms. Rubel for, let's ask that tonight.
Well, you did mention the $600 million backlog. Was that major maintenance?
I'll let Adina answer that.
Yes, the $600 million in deferred maintenance is capital to major maintenance.
That's the major maintenance. Okay. I'll just leave it at that, because that's not a levy issue necessarily. It's a bigger issue.
It's a different issue.
Different issue, yeah. But thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counselor Green?
I'll keep my comments brief. I just wanted to say thank you so much for serving on this committee. It's extremely important work. I do have a question, though. In Appendix B of the report, you described the leveraged funding model. I'd like to know a little bit more about the successes and maybe opportunities where that could be tweaked, like specifically, I understand that it sort of preserves capacity of the levy to kind of spread that out over a larger array of services. Does that preservation also involve like sort of interest earnings? Like, I'd like to know more. Thanks.
So the Parks Levy Fund is a separate fund, and it does earn interest. So levy resources are also not required to be spent in that five-year window, although we are projecting that we will spend them in that five-year window. Were there more specifics about the leveraged funding model?
Nope, that's very helpful. I was specifically curious about the interest piece, and I just want to encourage us to think about that more broadly in all of our work in the city. It's good to be fiscal stewards that way.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Thank you. My comment is really, I want to use this as an example for the colleagues for the city is, you know, I've been at a lot of municipalities where we have nighttime meetings. This is a big report. It was an important report, and this is the trend. And so I would encourage us to monitor how we use our nighttime meetings, because this is the trend that happens all over Oregon, where we go late and we cut off or we reduce the information that we receive because we get up against human needs, right? That's not a bad reason. It's just the nature of what a nighttime meeting does. And so I know that we got some praise earlier for thanking us to have this meeting tonight, but I would also say we gave up some stuff, and you guys were some of them that we gave up, because we got a very abridged version of what you had to share tonight. That will happen the rest of this year in some form or fashion, and so I just wanted to highlight that, to use these as incredibly sparingly as possible.
Any other questions from council? Thank you all for being here. Thank you for your patience, and thank you for the information and for your work on this and the services that you provide for our community. I believe that we have public comment?
We have one person signed up. Virginia Elaby is joining us online.
Virginia, are you still with us?
Virginia, you're muted. Can you hear us?
Yes, I think I've got it now. Thank you. My name is Virginia Elaby, and I'm testifying on behalf of the concerned citizens, an informal group engaged in park-related issues. My testimony tonight focuses on the potential that the 2020 Parks Levy could end up harming the financial sustainability of our city's beloved park system. Given that risk, our group urges the council to get more frequent updates on park, bureau finances, and to carefully vet renewal proposals. For those unfamiliar with the concept, financial sustainability refers to an organization's ability to pay for its operations, major capital maintenance, and capital growth projects without imposing undue burdens on future generations. Using that definition, Parks has had a financial sustainability problem for over a decade, as evidenced by the massive deferred maintenance backlog that Parks testified about. Bureau leaders have warned this maintenance backlog could necessitate the closure of one in five park assets by 2035. I admit, it seems odd to flag the potential that the 2020 levy itself could erode the Bureau's financial sustainability, when the reports before you show that levy revenues have exceeded levy expenditures for three straight years. But their trajectory in the composition of levy spending R&amp;D causes for worry. In a budget review a year ago, the City Budget Office characterized Parks expenditures as untenable and noted the Bureau's full personnel costs were greater than its general fund allocation. These operations-related financial sustainability risks merit high-level attention, given the value Portlanders attach to parks. I'll close by elaborating on our two earlier suggestions for council action. First, we recommend the council request quarterly updates on levy expenditure and the rate at which accumulated levy funds are being drawn down. Second, the council should allow sufficient time to rigorously examine future levy referral requests. One key issue is whether levy measure hiking the current mill rate in order to maintain existing operational service levels would be compatible with the core value of fiscal responsibility. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Elaby. Thank you for bearing with us this late and for your very action-oriented testimony.
That completes testimony.
Great. Any further council discussion? On a report, we are actually looking for a motion in a second before we can vote.
So moved.
Accept the report, so moved.
Yeah. I believe we have a motion in a second to accept the report.
Avalos?
Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Now?
I just want to congratulate you on the clean audit. I had the opportunity to hear that in advance as a member of the Parks Board. I appreciate it, and I also want to thank Mary Rubel and the whole Parks Levy Oversight Committee for your service, as well as the Parks Board, which I was privileged to be a member of very recently. I'll keep it short, and let's just stop it there. I would like...
Ryan?
Yeah, I quickly want to say thank you, Director Long. Thank you for staying up past your bedtime. And Claire Flynn and Mary Rubel, you're such an extraordinary volunteer. I just have to say that in the ramp-up, while in the public health's recommended COVID distancing, there was some expected struggle at the beginning of the levy, and that was, I think, unfairly amplified out there in the media, like we were behind or something. And today, you probably won't receive the corresponding positive press on how things caught up, and we're definitely providing the services as it was outlined in the levy, so I wanted to make sure I took a moment to congratulate you for that. Thank you.
Claye Amaline?
Aye.
Maria?
Thank you guys so much for being here late at night to give us this presentation, and I look forward to going through the rest of the materials. Aye.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Aye.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Portoguiny?
Aye, thank you.
The report is accepted.
We are moving back in our agenda to item seven, I believe.
Madam President, can I suggest we do 11 prior to that? Or request it? Just because I know we have guests here.
Do we have any issues with 11 under the current rules? Do we need to adopt the new rules before we do item 11? Linley?
That's a good question.
So the question is, if any of the committee assignments include...
That's 12.
Oh, that's 12. No, no.
Okay. 11 is fine.
Sorry, thank you.
Okay. Any objection to moving to number, item number 11 on the agenda? Okay, without objection. Kealan?
Withdraw authorization for the city attorney to file an unfair labor practice complaint for a collective bargaining agreement violation.
Counselor Green?
Thank you, Madam President, as well as my colleagues who consented to bring this urgent item with the nine-fifths procedure. It is urgent, and so I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank, special thanks to Counselor Zimmerman for co-sponsoring this resolution with me, and also Counselor Ryan for your vote last December, which was, I think, the sole no vote on this, which gives cause for the reason to rescind it today. So thank you for that leadership at that time. I see the inauguration of this new form of government as an opportunity to not only change how Portlanders engage with municipal government and influence policy development, but also how council engages with the labor movement. My hope is that this council stands with AFSMI and seeks every opportunity to provide assurances to its rank-and-file members that we have their backs, and that includes respecting their right to organize for a better contract. Therefore, I'm introducing this with Counselor Zimmerman, a resolution that withdraws the authorization specifically granted on December 4th, 2024, by the previous council for the city attorney to file an unfair labor practice. Is my contention, I think it is our contention, that this was unnecessarily antagonistic to AFSMI members who were facing a challenging contract fight. So the city attorney has yet to file this UOP, so I think this is a fairly straightforward resolution, and we have an opportunity to hit the reset switch on this relationship with AFSMI and turn down the temperature during this cooling-off period. We're trying to cool off, right? So with, you know, with the city as part of this contract negotiation. So at this point, I'd just like to offer to Counselor Zimmerman an opportunity to say some remarks as well.
Thank you. Counselor Green, and your leadership on this, I appreciate being a part of it as well. You know, I'm supporting this, and I brought it forward because I think that with this new government, that there have been a few times where I think us signaling who we are, what positions we have, is an important thing. I recognize the last council and the issues at the time, and my assessment after talking with folks is that this was an unnecessary boil point. And so while I don't think we'll change the overall economics of negotiations, I do think it can change how we go about those negotiations on both sides, and so that's why I'll support it, and I will ask for others' support as well.
Any questions to our presenters and fellow councilors about their item? Counselor Green?
There's no question. Just the question is, do I need to actually make a motion for this, or is it already in place?
It is already in place, and it looks like Counselor Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to say thank you all for your leadership, your courageous leadership on bringing this forward, and as we are talking about making sure that we treat others as we want to be treated, I just want to make a note that with AFSMI, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. visited Memphis, Tennessee in '68, and he went to Tennessee to go support AFSMI, the AFSMI folks who were the sanitation workers. And those sanitation workers were working in unsafe working conditions that they faced at the time. And during that visit in 1968 in Memphis on April 4th, Dr. King was assassinated coming to help the workers of AFSMI. Had they had a council like ours that believed in labor and supporting folks not having unsafe working conditions, but it proved again the heart of Dr. King. So in the spirit of Dr. King, I will be supporting your resolution. Thank you.
Any other questions from councilors? Did we have any last-minute public testimony sign up?
No one signed up.
Hey. Clark, could you call the roll then for us?
Avalos?
This is an easy yes. Aye.
Dunphy?
Aye.
Smith?
Aye.
Yeah, thank you for introducing this. Elections matter. This is a pro-labor council. We want to lower the temperature during the cooling-down period with AFSMI and also with our labor partners generally. I vote yes.
Ryan?
Yeah, my vote remains the same, although then it was important to say no, and then this one, I can say aye. Aye.
Claye Amaline?
Thank you, councilors Zimmerman and Green, for bringing this forward. I think this is really important. It's an important symbol. It's an important thing to do, and I believe it's true that we do have a pretty labor-friendly, pro-labor council, and I just want to add there that I'm not only pro-labor, I am labor. I fully understand deep in my bones what solidarity forever means. I've taken out a group on strike. I am a rank-and-file union member still, and I will be continuing to pay my dues while I serve on city council, and so just want you to know that I understand that what workers are fighting for, when you're fighting for something, it's not just for yourself, it's not just for the members in your group, but it's for all workers.
A vote.
And I vote aye. Maria?
I'm very proud to vote aye on this. I hope that the city can take steps towards making material amends as well to our workers and making sure that they get everything that they deserve, because they do so much for us. Thank you.
Novick?
Aye.
Clark?
Thanks, guys. This is an easy yes, and I think it demonstrates that we all want to operate in good faith.
Green?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Thank you to everybody. Aye.
Portoguiny?
Negotiations are hard, and these negotiations will still be hard and will likely still be contentious, but I hope that the city's employees, our employees who are at the bargaining table with the city, see this vote as a sign that this council wants us to have a relationship embedded in respect for the work that they do, for the processes that we engage in. I'm a yes.
The resolution is adopted.
I think that now, I think that now leaves us with two items left on our agenda. I think that now, I think that now leaves us with two items left on our agenda. I would like us to move back to the second reading of our rules, Agenda Item 7.
Amend council organization and procedure code related to the council agenda, council rules, and council committees.
This is currently a non-emergency ordinance, and if we would like it to go into effect tonight to allow us to adopt our committee structure in the way in which we intended to, we do need to add an emergency clause to this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Just a question. I did submit a proposed amendment.
Okay.
Does that, do we have to verbally say so moved for that, or?
We do need to state the purpose for the emergency, and I can read that language if it would be helpful.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the motion would be, the council declares that an emergency exists because a delay in the city's implementation of these rules would cause meetings in the intervening 30 days to have different procedures, creating confusion for the public and city staff. Therefore, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage by the council.
So I am going to move that.
And then, I'm sorry, who was the second?
Counselor Smith.
Thank you.
Linley, are we out of order?
Absolutely not. I did want to clarify with the counselor, you had submitted an amendment that had additional language, but at this point it's just the emergency clause.
I'm sorry, do we have another amendment we need to consider first?
I submitted two different amendments.
Okay, I'm sorry. Should we withdraw that and consider the other amendment first?
No, it sounds like there's only one amendment that is on the table. The...
Presently, it's just that emergency clause.
The emergency clause, okay.
Sorry, Counselor, it was just, it was posted on the auditor's webpage as one amendment, and we just were trying to make sure we understood what it was.
I see. Thank you for clarifying. I think there was a miscommunication earlier. Yeah.
Are we okay to call roll on this vote? Okay, go ahead, Kealan.
Okay, so just to clarify, this is the vote on the amendment.
Okay. Avalos.
This is, can, we didn't have a discussion either, by the way.
This is the vote on the emergency clause, on the amendment to add an emergency clause.
Okay, so we're just doing the amendments separately? Is that what's happening? Okay. Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Canal.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Koyama Lane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Purtel Guinea.
Aye.
And Counselor Canal, I apologize, I thought these two were submitted together, so.
I sent them in.
Go ahead with your additional.
Yeah, the other amendment that I put forward was on the, it's to add the item C in there. Do you have, can you read that for us, Kealan?
Yes, so the amendment was to add Directive C, the council president will ensure a proposal to replace or extend Chapter 3.02 as placed on the council agenda by October 31st, 2025.
So I'd like to move that, but just to give a little context to this particular proposal, based on the feedback and public testimony received at the last meeting on January 2nd, including from some GTAC members, there was, I think, an acknowledgement up here on the dais that the code regarding council operation needs a holistic review that is broader than the scope of this document and revision, and with the understanding that council will undertake this code review and revision this year, I was intending to put forward a amendment that would repeal the entire title on December 31st. After talking to our council president and getting her insight on this, I have adjusted to the amendment I'm putting forward, which is asking the council president to either bring that proposal forward through whatever processes we choose to do, or to simply say we're going to extend that date out by October 31st. So the amendment, this revised version of it is designed to ensure that the same reevaluation of our overall rules is done, to be responsive to public comment and insight around the reason why people were asking for a sunset clause, but to reduce the risk, actually to eliminate the risk of us having no rules whatsoever should we get to that point and not have finished our holistic review. And I did discuss this matter with the president prior to that. I also just wanted to say that the reason for the October 31st date versus the December 31st date is that's the time it would be beginning to be discussed, and so it would still be able to take effect by December 31st for the new thing. Again, that was for the beginning of next year, and again, that was after discussion with the president. So, thank you.
Any discussion? Do we?
Second.
There we go. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? You do have your hand up. Go right ahead, Counselor Clark.
There was a second, I didn't hear it. Oh, sorry, okay. So can you just explain to me a little bit more why this is really necessary? Because it seems like this is something that would happen in the operations committee. I don't really understand why this is necessary. Thank you.
Counselor Canal, go ahead.
Yeah, I think we got both written and verbal testimony that effectively said that inserting a sunset clause would commit us as a council to revisiting not only whether these changes work, but whether the broader set of rules adopted for us by the previous council were. I think it, we would still have the opportunity and the right to revise our rules or not under either circumstance, but this is a public commitment of that intent, and it was something that was asked for by a lot of the public testimony, and so I'm proposing this partially to be responsive to that testimony.
Can I just ask a follow-up? I guess I'm just having a hard time with it because it doesn't seem like we're going to be having much of a practice before then. I mean, how many months is that? I don't know, it just, I'm not sure I'm convinced of the necessity for this.
Counselor Green.
Yes, I'd like to speak in favor of the amendment for a couple of reasons. One, I think it's clean in that it does, in the software world, you call it error trapping. It looks for the gap where you're like, oh, this is a major flaw in the sunset piece. I appreciate the kind of conversation around ensuring that the council president has governance over that, and that there's no lapse, but also I was compelled by the testimony I heard two weeks ago. There was a lot of folks who felt like this proposal that we would vote on tonight really doesn't do justice to the new charter system in terms of the rules that we need to use to operate. I have felt rushed at times as part of this, and like I think no matter which side of those discussions you were on, we can all agree that it was fast, it was not very robust, and we were all really tired. And so I think what this does is it allows us to sort of publicly affirm that, hey, we, there is an opportunity to reset this, and maybe that is just an extension of the rules. That's something that we always have, but I would really like to hear more from the community through the Governance Committee or whatever we think is the appropriate committee to sort of like test some of these assumptions in here. So I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Counselor Zimmerman.
Now, as it stands, without this amendment, these rules continue, and as it stands, without this amendment, these rules can be changed at any time. That is what one of the committees that the president will be proposing here soon is tasked with in a large part. So I am not in favor of this amendment because I think that this tactic of continuing to go back to this sunsetting is unhelpful in terms of setting precedent. Makes it feel like we are in a Band-Aid year, and I don't appreciate that. I think that the year in which we're doing this work, we've got to be hitting our stride, and where we find problems, we've got to address those problems in the right practice. But we keep coming back to this idea, and it was a struggle to get where we were. Now this amendment's coming in the second part of it, and I don't love that. But I would just say that this council has the ability to bring new changes to these rules at any time we want, and that there was a process being set up to do that. The... This is related to some other aspects, and it doesn't, it doesn't give me confidence that folks are operating with expectation that these rules are something that they don't want to throw out entirely. And I want a little bit of faith that we're going to be working through these rules and making this work and making these committees work and noting problems versus just knowing that there is a sunset coming and we can deal with it all then. I think that's a weird kicking of the can. So I'll be a strong no vote on this. I hope others will consider that, that we can always make changes as we need to. We do not need to write into this ordinance.
Counselor Avalos.
I agree and understand that we can make changes whenever. I think part of this amendment and why I plan to support it is, one, because of what Counselor Green has mentioned of public accountability to us revisiting this, making sure that we're hearing from community, because as I've said, I think at whatever other meeting, I strongly think that we need to find ways to increase the people's voice, and I think the rules are a critical part of that. But I also see it as an accountability that we are making to each other as well, that I would worry by not putting something like this in here, that we would have a really difficult time trying to bring some of these things to the table, especially given that I have also received lots of outreach from constituents about ideas for how to make them better and how them better serve the people. So I'm supporting it not just for the people, but also to hold all of us accountable to doing that so that I don't have to worry that it's going to be a big fight if I want to come talk about it again. We are in a new form of government. I understand that we're trying to move with intention and not feel like this is a Band-Aid year. I really do hear that and understand that. I think, and I agree that we shouldn't do that for everything. I think this is one of the hills I will die on, doing a sunset clause for this particular issue because it's just so foundational to how we work, but I understand that spirit and don't plan on making that a habit for other bills. So I plan to vote for it.
Counselor Koyama Lane.
I believe that committing to reevaluating shows that we have the humility to reflect and a willingness to be responsive to the needs that come up for the council and our constituents. We heard from GTAC members and other community members that they are in support of this, and I plan to vote in favor of this amendment.
Counselor Mario.
I'll keep my comments brief. I think that the sunset clause allows us to have a set time to revisit this issue because I think we're going to be faced with an onslaught of issues, and it's going to be really hard to carve out that time later. So I think it's really important to have a set date just to revisit. We are establishing a new form of government that is going to last us, God willing, the next few hundred years, and so that means that we really have to do it right. So I think it's really important that we do take community feedback into, you know, how are our committees working? Did people feel like they could access them? Did they feel like they could come testify? That sort of stuff is really important to me, and I think with any good plan, you take a moment to look back on it and reflect on what worked and what didn't. And I agree with what Counselor Avalos said, this isn't going to be a regular thing that happens. This is kind of a one-time thing as far as the first year of establishing this new government. Thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment? Kealan, could you call the roll? And we are voting not on the rules themselves, but on the amendment to the rules.
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Canal.
Aye.
Ryan.
No.
Koyama Lane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
First of all, I just want to say, Counselor Avalos, I don't want to see you die on any hills at all, or on the flat either. Aye.
Clark.
No.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
No.
Purtel Guinea.
Counselor Canal, I'm grateful that you were willing to change this from a sunset clause that left us with no rules to something that just asks us to have a conversation, which I intend for us to have with or without this measure. I will vote aye. I believe that passed. Okay. We have an ordinance before us, second reading on a set of rules, which has been amended twice now tonight. Any further discussion on the rules before we vote? Okay, Kealan, could you call the roll?
Avalos.
Aye.
Dunphy.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Canal.
So I'm going to vote aye on this. I just want to note one thing. I remain in support of this because it is a compromise we made to put forward a short-term rules patch. I did want to highlight one thing in this compromise that still needs to be addressed around district representation on committees. I evaluated this originally through looking at a few specific committees like labor and workforce or governance, where one's experience and expertise might be more relevant than geography in building a committee's membership, but there are other committees in which geography is particularly relevant to the work discussed. So I'm not going to stand in the way over that, but I do think that we should ensure that the longer-term conversation around our council procedures includes addressing this concern in a way that meets with our constituents' comments and GTAC's recommendations, and I intend to apply this standard to those most relevant committees on a case-by-case basis going forward. I also want to just observe that there were three written testimonies submitted that related to written, to evening council meetings, and I want to support that as well as public input in the full city council meetings as well as committees, and for building a council where power is grown rather than diluted by being shared. I look forward to continuing that conversation after this vote, and I vote yes.
Ryan.
I want to acknowledge council leadership, council president, Madam President, Madam Vice President, for all the work that you've done to move this forward. You've been very thoughtful, and I appreciate that. I vote aye.
Koyama Lane.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Novick.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
Aye.
Zimmerman.
Aye.
Purtel Guinea.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Point of information, clarification, I don't know. Could I ask that we have a practice after a vote that we just restate what the vote count is? I don't know if that's Kealan that should do that, or if you, President Purtel Guinea, but I'd appreciate that.
Absolutely. Kealan is taking the official tally, so I will let Kealan do that.
Thank you.
Passes with 12.
Thank you. Thank you, Kealan.
But could you say the numbers? That's what I'm saying. Like, oh, did you say it passed?
Oh, passes with 12, sorry.
With 12 is what you said, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to our final agenda item, Agenda Item 12 on our 9/12 agenda. This is the establishment of our committees and the population of the membership and leadership of our committees. Just as a reminder, we had a work session on potential committees last week so that we could have a public conversation about what this might look like. Based on some of the interests that all of you had expressed, I brought forward a proposal of nine committees, and based on your feedback, we slimmed that down to eight, changed some of the descriptions, some of the jurisdictions of a few of those committees, and filled it in with membership, really from things you all have said during and since your campaigns, conversations that many of us had early on about your general interests and what you were hoping to do with council. This can change. I can bring forward a proposal to you all if we need to make changes at a later date. In general, I hope that the precedent that we set is that committee membership lasts for a year so that we have stability, consistency to get the work done, but in this first year, I know that we may need to reevaluate things. I also want to note that with eight committees, we are asking a lot of the folks who support us, our Bureau of Technology Services, our security, the clerk's office within the auditor's office, our own council operations, our attorneys who are here today, as well as others, and we may need to work with them as we go through this process of getting our committees up and running to make sure that they have the supports that they need as well. Is there any, oh, are there any questions? Let's start with questions before discussion. Are there any questions? Counselor Zimmerman. Counselor Avalos.
Okay, so yes, Madam President, I have a question. So some of the testimony that we received included some concern about separating land use and development from housing. This is a concern that I do share, and in fact, one of the policies I was hoping to address through the Housing Committee was identifying metrics for Portland permitting in development, so we could identify and track measures of success for housing production. So the way the descriptions are written, I'm not sure where something like that would reside, and wanted to see if you could add some clarity on whether the Housing Committee could address development of housing, or were you planning on that being more in climate?
The intention here is that the Housing Committee would address the full continuum of housing through the development of market rate housing. Land use is within Climate Resilience and Land Use Committees, so the broader view of where are we putting different things within our city is in that committee where we're having a land use and climate conversation. I've received some feedback about the fact that permitting is in different places within our committee structure, and one of the things that we'll need to address as we look more broadly at rules and procedures is how we use the idea of potentially subsequent committees to make sure that permitting all comes back to one place at the end of the day, so that we are talking about permitting within the bounds of the policies that, that permitting or that necessitate that permitting, and also a place where we look at permitting more holistically. So you're right, this is a place where there's some division, but I foresee, and I hope that if this passes and you are chair of that committee, when we have our conversations about your goals for the committee, that we are talking about a committee where you're looking at the full spectrum of housing, from the supports for folks who are unhoused to our subsidized housing, to how we are developing market rate housing, and what we can do to ensure that we have enough housing supply in our city.
I appreciate that, and I'll just say, you know, I think as we're going to need to discuss in a few months, right, like you said at the beginning, if everything is in the right place, I'll just keep that as a flag for us to keep checking. But I appreciate your answer. Thank you.
Counselor Smith.
Yes, Madam President. Will all the committee work be done in this council chambers?
We have a few options. It is much easier for the teams that support us if our committee work is all done in these council chambers. There are other rooms, the 1900 Building and at the Portland Building, that we can use if we run into conflicts. Those come with additional work for our staff and additional cost to our council. So we will need to work on our council schedule. Our council operations team has been looking at a potential schedule, and they can make it work all in this room. We do have other options if there is an occasional need for something different.
Perfect.
Counselor Green.
Thank you, Madam President. Firstly, I just, you guys did a lot of work. This is quite the puzzle to solve. I really, I really appreciate all that hard work. I just want to speak to a couple of things. Firstly, I appreciate land use being brought up kind of right at the forefront. I also read those comments, and I've also been thinking about it. I agree that the right place for it is climate resilience and land use, and the reason why is because you can make the same argument from the other side that, why is it in housing? Because land use is actually a major site of economic development, it is a major site of environmental policy, it is, it's sort of a foundational policy area for us. And so I only say that just because, no matter how we chose to slice and dice this, I think there was always going to be an implicit obligation and duty on the chairs of these committees to decide when it's appropriate to ask for a joint committee. But there may be issues that cut across this stuff in certain ways, that it's not appropriate for a single committee to be considering. And so we would, we would spin up a joint committee. I think that's how you get around this complaint that these are not aligned with service areas. And I, and I like that they're not aligned with service areas, because I don't necessarily agree with the service area model. I'm not saying I don't like them right now, but this is our prerogative to change, right? These are policy areas that we want to do our work in, and I think these are, these are a good representative look at the policy areas of urgency. The other thing I would like to say is that as we kind of go forward in time, and you know, as you, as you mentioned, we will have an opportunity to check in on this, and you can always propose a change. Let's keep our eye on the district represent, representation piece. If we find that there's, like, for instance, I look at transportation, infrastructure, I don't see any District 2 representation on there. And I think that's okay for now, because I believe that the people on that committee are going to be thinking about District 2. But if, if we find that that's not okay, I hope that we can bring that discussion into play, and we maybe would bring that to a rules, a rules discussion as well. And then finally, you know, I, I like, I like it. So I think, I think I'm, I'm generally in support of this, and I'm really, I'm really eager to hear what other, other colleagues are, are thinking on this. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Canall.
Yeah, I'll start with my questions. I wanted to understand where a few things landed in terms of jurisdiction of committees. So I apologize if I'm putting our president, vice president on the spot here, but what, and I think it doesn't necessarily need to be amended, and I think the fact that it might be clarified here would be helpful for me to know going forward. I'm not proposing a change, but I just want to have it said out loud. Would renters' rights fit into the housing and homelessness conversation? Would that be something they're authorized to discuss?
My assumption would be that that would be the best place for it. And the way that our rules are that we adopted, counselors can, can move to send their bills to specific committees, but my advice to committee chairs and my ask to all of you would be that renters' rights issues go to that committee, yes.
Thank you. Will the Public Safety, Community and Public Safety Committee handle issues related to police accountability and the Parks Rangers?
Yes, comma, yes, asterisk. Parks is a little bit split on this proposal. The Parks and Rec Bureau is a little bit split on this proposal. So Parks Rangers could fall, depending on the type of discussion, in the Climate Resilience and Land Use Committee, if we're talking about how we use and work with our parks. But if we are talking about them within the bounds of our broader law enforcement system and public safety system, then certainly they would be part of those conversations in community and public safety.
Thank you. And then if you could clarify about where the recreation side of Parks and Recreation would live?
Yes, and that is a change from the conversation that we had last Wednesday, based on feedback from many of you on council. Parks still lies within climate resilience and land use. Recreation now lies within arts and economy. And because Bureau budget work will take place in a separate committee, we're able to split the policy like that, to have those separate conversations. As Counselor Green talked about, there may be times where we need to bring things together, but predominantly, the work of recreation will be part of our conversation around arts and economy.
Thank you. And my last question is, if you could speak to the three committees that don't have district representation, you're thinking around from all four districts, and if you could speak to the thought process there.
You know, one of our colleagues said this was a puzzle. And as we put this puzzle together, the different overlays of the types of representation, we needed to make sure we had, the interests and expertise we needed to make sure we had, were also something on, on my mind, and I think on Vice President Koyama-Lane's mind as well. And to the extent possible, we tried to make sure we had district representation from each district on each committee, and we made sure that there were representatives from at least three of the four districts on each committee. Transportation and Infrastructure does, as one of our colleagues mentioned, lack a counselor from our district, from District 2. I believe, I should have had my notes on this in front of me, and I didn't. I don't usually let myself get caught off guard like that. Let me see if I have it here. Climate, resilience, and land use, I believe, does not have, oh, it does now, it does. We changed that one. Old news. Labor and...
Unless something's changed, climate resilience and land use still doesn't have D4.
Oh, four. I apologize. I apologize. I made my note wrong on that one. You're right, climate resilience and land use is lacking somebody from D4.
And then arts and economy for three.
Yes, and arts and economy was missing somebody from District 3. So those are the three places, I think it's good to state that on the record, where we have representatives from three of the four districts. And we will be asking our colleagues, at least I know that I will, as it relates to transportation, to make sure to pay attention to the concerns in our districts as well. Any counselor can bring a policy to any committee, even if you don't sit on that committee. So this doesn't preclude conversations about those topics as they relate to individual districts from coming forward. And again, if we need to make changes because the district's issues are not being brought forward, we can certainly do that through an additional resolution at any time. Anything further? Counselor Zimmerman.
Yeah, these questions have been helpful. It's good to hear kind of where people's thoughts go. I just, when I think about these committees, I just reemphasize for myself and for others that we, we won't be doing the permitting, all right? We won't be directing any day-to-day work. We, we will be tackling the future initiatives we may introduce, or we may discuss changes that the administration would like to see come forward as they relate to the policy area. I, I think very few city services will only appear in front of one committee, probably none, actually. And so that, I frame it that way for a couple of reasons. I will never use the term authorized to discuss, because as a member and as a chair, I will go where I think the committee needs to go, is the way I would approach it, meaning I don't think it's possible to write everything down. And if I think that a committee section, a committee's body of work has a relation to an area of a department of a bureau, then I think it's fully within our, in our position to go there. So I think, I look at these as suggested topic areas in the, in the subtext, not as must-be-only areas. So that's, I just want to frame that up, and I hope others will think of that, because I think we're asking some leadership, not only of the members of each of those committees, but in particular, the chair and the vice chair. And I'm looking forward to it. Like, I, I don't have a problem with the non-district representation in every area, in large part because I am looking to some of the other 11 to be my expert on that topic, because that's either an area that is maybe of less interest to me, or an area where I'm not nearly as talented as some of you all are. And so I'm okay giving up that space, but I recognize also why it was, at least initially, identified by some folks as being very important. So, but for me, I, I do get it, and I'm, I'm okay with it. But I think it's important that we communicate some of these changes in these committee roles to our stakeholders, right? I, I do think that we run the risk of sending the wrong signal by having a few different committees who are somehow affecting housing production, which is related to permitting, which is related to land use. We could send the wrong signal if we just do this in a vacuum and are not overly communicating. What I will say is, what is the rule of the, of the land today will be the rule of the land tomorrow, after these are adopted, in terms of the day-to-day operations, because it turns out the committee in this council haven't passed any new policies. And that's pretty normal for a legislative body. Our stakeholders, I think, are cautious right now. And so as we do this, as we have those, let's communicate that broadly, to say, just because the, the Housing Committee is taking up a topic, doesn't mean that it's going to change something tomorrow, right? The day-to-day practice that was set up to get permitting in alignment remains, and that's where those two gentlemen over there, it's their job to implement it, to figure it out, to keep pushing things through the pipeline. And when we pass complicated things, it will be their job to figure out how to do that in the future, not in the next moment. And I think that's also important for all of us to recognize. So I'm trying to keep some space there. I would encourage all of us to take ownership of these areas, instead of taking a subservient role in terms of how do we do it? No. I would say, please lean in. Say, this is what I should be talking about. In fact, you have to make the case why I shouldn't be talking about it, right? And that's what I'm hoping that some of these committees look very empowered to do. And that's where I'm at, right? And so I will support this, and it's going to be fun.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green.
I apologize, my colleagues, that I'm speaking again. We are tired. I am tired, but this is important, so we should put this on the record. I just want to say that the charter grants City Council the, the power to delegate duties and powers to committees. And I think, I interpret that to mean that when we form these committees and we assign leadership roles there, those chairs, or vice chairs, or chair, co-chair, you know, whatever, whatever the model is, that's their job now to figure out what that scope is, okay? And if you can't figure it out, well, maybe you're not suited for leadership, right? That's up to us. And so I think, you know, in the spirit of what you're saying, there may be some areas where it's like, okay, this is an edge case. We're in, we're in a boundary issue. I'm going to bring this discussion to the full council. I'm going to talk to my colleagues, and then we'll iterate that way. So I just kind of think that that's how I expect this to go. I, and I agree that we, we're going to need to like, really be communicative of our, of the community at large, but I think that's the whole spirit of all this. That's why we have these committees in the first place, is so we're, we're doing this in the daylight. We want them to show up. I want them to show up and say, I don't like this, the name of this committee. I think you're not spending enough time on permitting and housing production. Great, let me hear that. Let's, let's talk about that, and let's, let's do some policy development. So, that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions before we move on to public testimony? Okay.
We have two people signed up. First up is Terry Harris.
Mr. Harris, thank you for being with us.
Well, at this time of day, I'll either be loud or something to keep your attention. I actually appreciate the conversation you had at the work session, and I appreciated the conversation you had here. I'm going to go to my prepared stuff, but it, it changed a little bit. I'm on GTAC, but GTAC didn't have the opportunity to review this, and so I'm speaking again in my own personal capacity. Basically, we support committees. We support your resolution to establish these committees, and we support you putting them to work as soon as you can. However, I'd like to emphasize that you still need some committee rules and procedures, and developing them, maybe in a committee, needs to be an urgent priority. On capacity, we understand that this council was failed by the previous council to provide resources, but like it or not, on the capacity issue, it's yours now. It is this council's responsibility. The lack of capacity to do the work is not going to be an excuse you can use, because you have the power to create that capacity if you need it. And that will be important when committees start happening. Second, in the work session, there was a comment that the work is the same regardless of the number of committees, all that. And that's kind of true, but the idea behind committees is you can start working in parallel, and you have to think that way. Not everything has to be cycled through this broad body. You need to start thinking in, and, and it goes to capacity, because if you're going to have bottlenecks, you need to identify those bottlenecks and mitigate them as soon as you can. And that might be using other spaces and getting the staff for multiple committees at the same time. I won't go into the district representation. You've discussed it. You've heard GTAC's position on it. We still think you should do it, and I think you're going to hear from your constituents that they're going to want that. But it's your decision. We understand the puzzle that you had. 30 seconds, and it was pretty good. Just for example, on the land use and housing thing, having joint committee sessions will be useful, and you should use them. It's more eyes on the problem, more discussion, and I think that's great. We would recommend a rule that would establish explicitly that every policy matter has a committee that can review the matter. That should go in your rules. Or a committee with catch-all jurisdiction, and that should be the Governance Committee. And if you excuse me, got to embed community engagement and public input in, to these rules, to your procedures, from the very beginning. these rules, to your procedures, from the very beginning. It shouldn't be that your first public comment on a resolution is after you've had a work session, after you've discussed it for a half hour. You should be debating and deliberating after you hear from the public, and that's just basic public input 101. So, thank you for the additional 47 seconds.
Thank you. We appreciate the comments.
Next up, we have Dan Handelman online.
Good evening. Can you hear me, council members?
We can.
Great. Well, my name is still Dan Handelman, five hours later. I use he/him pronouns, I'm with Portland Cop Watch. It's a bit confusing that there are six service areas and eight subcommittees, and it's not 100% clear whether they match up. I wrote these comments before hearing your comments, or some of them you may have answered, but I don't have time to change everything. Members of the then-decommissioned Police Accountability Commission testified about the city's version of the new oversight board, strongly suggesting that to ensure the new oversight system is as independent as spelled out in the Charter, it should not be in the same service area as the police. It's our understanding, though difficult to find evidence on the city's website, that as a result, the new oversight system was moved to the operations area, which is where the Bureau of Human Resources resides. This makes sense, because a lot of work of the Community Board for Police Accountability will be reviewing the job performance of city employees, specifically police officers. So, this raises the question of whether the oversight system will also be kept insulated from the Police Bureau by having one of the council's committees, which is not the Public Safety Committee, oversee the implementation and then ongoing operations of the board. Pause for possible answer. Okay, I'll take my answer later. And we also echo Mr. Harris's testimony, there should be representatives from each district on every committee, which two council members addressed already, so I won't go through our list, but we got the same numbers that we heard read into the record. In a broader context, it's hard to know whether committee members, community members, who are interested in many aspects of the city's functions, will have to go to multiple subcommittees to address their concerns, and then back to the full council. It would seem that ideas brought to council are to be fully formed, I would agree again, with Mr. Harris, it would be best to get committee input all along the way. That doesn't take away the full council's responsibility to hear public testimony, consider it, before adopting proposals. You're all aware of this too, I think I heard some mention of it, that six counselors are each on four committees while four others are only on three. It makes sense that the President and Vice Presidents of the council are only on two each. We read the attachment explaining the roles of the Chair and Vice Chair for each committee, but we wonder how that differs from committees with co-chairs. The Police Accountability Commission had it structured with three co-chairs, so that if there is a disagreement among them, it can be resolved by a vote, which is not possible with just two people. It would be great to hope the whole co-chairs will always agree on everything, but that may not be realistic. Another question that needs to be resolved soon, I'm not sure how it will happen in a committee or a council, is the applications for the oversight board. They should be run through council and the nominated committee, and in our opinion, the former Police Accountability Commission and the broader community, to be sure it matches the expectations of what the new board will do. Where do we bring that concern? Finally, it's of concern that this is only the council's second meeting, and there are already two items on the 9/12 agenda, meaning they weren't ready for publication as of last Friday, when the full agenda was posted. As a result, this item being added yesterday, we had to scramble to get this testimony prepared. We hope future uses of 9/12 should be few and far between. And with 10 seconds left, I want to say, we agree with reading the vote counts, it's a good idea, and you need bigger nameplates that sit on the back screen of computers so we know who you are, because of little ones underneath you aren't showing up on the screen. Thank you.
That completes testimony.
Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Handelman, and for the note about how the nameplates show up online. Is there any final council discussion? Okay. Kealan, could you call the roll?
Avalos.
Aye.
Genfie.
Aye.
Smith.
Aye.
Now.
Thank you to the President and Vice President for their efforts to balance so many competing interests, priorities, and backgrounds among the 12 of us, and come up with a slate of committees, responsibilities, leaders, and memberships. It is a ton of work, as Counselor Green mentioned, it's a lot of time, and it's appreciated. I'm also grateful for the trust you placed in Counselor Novick and I to lead a committee focused on community and public safety, and to colleagues who also will support a slate including that. Regardless of how this ends up going, I'm committed to leading that work with Counselor Novick openly collaboratively and with a clear focus on a safer Portland for everyone. When we discussed the rules patch a moment ago, I mentioned I remained interested in reaching a better outcome than that ordinance provided as it relates to district representation, and that I intended to apply a standard of whether geography is relevant to the subject matter, and then look and see if the membership of the committee reflects that on the most relevant committees. I think that you answered very adequately my questions about jurisdiction, and I'm very happy with that response. But on the subject of district representation, I'm concerned about the lack of D3 representation on Arts and Economy, because of how many significant districts in both of those spaces exist in that district, and how their needs are different than downtowns or 82nd. I'm even more concerned that District 4, where the CEI hub is located, does not have representation on Climate Resilience and Land Use, and as a representative of District 2, I got to most highly rank my concern that we're not represented on Transportation and Infrastructure. And when I talk to folks who live on Trenton or by McCoy Park, where the schools and the students are and the crosswalks aren't, or by, you know, the Montessori School on Lombard in Mississippi, I've been committed to ensuring that those voices are heard in it. I don't personally need to be on it, I am personally invested in it, and I trust that either of my district colleagues would have represented our districts very well in the Transportation and Infrastructure conversations, had we been there, and I'm disappointed that none of the three of us are. And I think the resolution needs to do both things, ensure that the policy discussions are as rich as possible, and ensure the representation exists in particular in the places where it's most relevant, and I think this document succeeds handily at the first of those. But because it does not, in my view, succeed as the second of these, I unfortunately must vote no. Thanks.
Ryan.
Yeah, we're building, and you did a great job getting the scaffolding up and running, and now we're going to experience it, and I just have a feeling we'll make some edits about a year from now, not earlier, but it's all good. Anyway, I vote aye. Thank you.
Kaya Malane.
Aye.
Mariel.
Aye.
Novick.
Now that it appears that this will have the votes to pass, I do feel compelled to confess to Counselors Green, Clark, and Zimmerman that, yes, Counselor Mariel and I have already discussed, and we've agreed, that we will take advantage of your absence in the Land Use Committee to zone District 4 and only District 4 for all the bad stuff. Aye.
Why would you say that?
Clark.
Aye.
Green.
I just want to say thank you for having the courage to put a socialist on the Economics Committee. Aye.
Zimmerman.
Well, Steve, as the Chair of Finance, remember that what goes around comes around. I am happy to support this. Thank you for your work, both of you. Aye.
Purtle Guinea.
Aye.
The resolution is adopted with a vote of 11 yeses and one no.
With that, I will close our council meeting at 11:13, and see you all back here at 9:30 tomorrow morning.